Good. Okay, I will call this regular meeting of the Public Site and Building Commission to order at 7:01. Please join me in the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. So, public input. Nobody and correspondence that didn't get. So, here comes David Olson. Hello, Mr. Olson. Yay. Collection of officers, I'd like to hold off till the end because there was a bunch of questions that came up in recent meetings. We've already done the last meeting that I answered, then I thought, well, there's more information that we could put out there. So I think we'll do that at the end and that way we can make sure everybody's kind of, because we've got all this new folks learning and learning and learning. So and you might even have more questions now, so if everybody's okay with that, we will do that. And then approval of meeting minutes, I will make a motion that we approve the regular meeting minutes of June 11, 2025.
Second.
Tom seconds, is there any discussion on this or anything needs to get changed or updated? Pretty good to me. All in favor? I opposed.
I was not here, so I'll stay.
So, Rod and Roger, yeah, those two aren't here. All the Davids are here.
I read the meeting. That's what I read in one of the meetings.
Yeah. Which is fine.
You have to abstain now.
Yeah, you still have to abstain. Okay, so, well, getting into the old business, we have Eric Benson from Public Works. We did our walk around last month and now Eric has a presentation to share with us. The lead to all the documents went into the shared drive, correct? Is that?
Mm-hmm.
Now, if you had trouble getting into it, let me know and we'll figure out how to get that. But I think, I think the only one I heard from was Jeff and David who needed it to go to G.I.
I guess, yeah.
I didn't look at it.
Yeah, I ran through it quickly, but if you want, I don't know which one you want to start with.
I got, oh, well, as far as the drive, I got a notification, Jeff.
Did that work? Oh, yeah, somebody gave me access. Yeah, I just happened to notice today and then go.
Yeah, it was just.
Some were empty, though.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, so, well, so just to let you know with that, I met with Jack from IT, you know what? A few weeks ago, because we do have the shared drives that were set up, the first one that was set up for the school renovation projects, Board of Ed set that up. And then from there, I don't know if I, it was before Jack, but I don't know if IT did it. But the Board of Ed kind of has control over it for the police station, training range and, well, HVAC, they do because it's their project, but.
Nancy, I can, I can share my screen and.
Yeah, because, but what I'm, what I'm trying to do is get any documents that are on my computer, here he is. Have a seat. Anything that I have, I have paper stuff from years ago, which I have to give to somebody, but I don't want to keep stuff. A lot of it's been dealt with or posted or whatever, but I just want to put it in a place that's available to whoever in the town that needs to be getting into it. Some of them are projects that are done already, but still. Somebody told me once to give all the paper to Public Works and Jeff, he was like, don't bring it here.
You can bring it there, but I, I will just file it downstairs.
Yeah. I'm keeping it organized by project. So, so those other, the ones that are antique, I've been kind of looking at stuff and I'm working on uploading to those files. So it's there. You can get it if you want it, somebody else can get it if they need to, we just have to get permission to have them. I'm not sure exactly how all that works. Does it go through you or does it go through Jack?
Sorry, what?
If the shared drive.
Oh.
Somebody needs access, who gives them access?
I think that everybody has access.
Okay, all right. That's, I just didn't know.
Yeah.
Yeah, any, either Kathy or myself or.
Okay, yeah, for these projects.
Yeah.
But for that one that says public site documents, that's got all those folders that Jack made. So, you know, it's going to be good to have that there and access for all of us.
I'll show you right now if you want.
Yeah, so Eric's going to start with which one, whatever one. So Kathy, can you make the screen big or make that full screen or whatever, however you want to do that, three dots and then there. There we go. Perfect.
All right, I'm sharing my screen. Okay, just to, when you get to Google Drive, this is what you should see.
Yep, I think everybody's, and that's what Roger was telling me, some of them are empty.
So, yes, and what, the empty ones, I set up and Jack said he was going to create a link in them. So since the older projects like the high school HVAC, Rockwell and Johnson, those were all hosted by the Board of Ed.
Yes.
Rather than make a copy of them. He's just, when you go into this drive, he's going to put in like a link.
That goes to the one that's existing.
Yeah.
That's good.
So, there's only one.
Yes.
So, I'll jump into the presentation in a second, but just to kind of review, so I'm going to start with the Highway Garage. What we have in here so far are just the three proposals. Those are the same three that we brought, I know we had a couple of extra copies, so some people might have them, that we brought to the, to the sidewalk on May 28th. And then the animal shelter, we just have the one document, which is the concept plan, also brought those.
Right.
So, and if anyone wants hard copies, just let, let me or Kathy know, we can, we can get you them. Okay, so.
So are you gonna, yeah.
Yeah, I'm gonna, unless you got anything else.
Animal shelters the first, I mean.
Oh.
Yeah, animal shelters first.
Want me to do that? Okay, we can just.
We could.
Stay by the promise.
Yeah.
Do that. That's fine.
But are you able to, Eric? Make the whole screen bigger or not?
Um, hold on, I can only maximize what, to what that blue area is.
Can you minimize your participants?
Yeah, the participants and all that.
This, I don't know.
And why this came up or where.
Can you exit at the top? It's over there on the airstream, not there, well, that's Kathy's doing that, yep, there you go. That's, I think, as big as we can get it. Unless you can make the participants kind of smaller, I think you can.
But you have to.
No.
They don't, they just go.
Look at, click on the participant thing at the bottom where the number six is. Yeah, with little people.
I'm saying.
Yeah, because I know with Zoom you can minimize them and all you see is a little bar at the top that says who's talking. Well.
It's fine, I mean, we can see it, right?
Yeah, this will be what we got here.
Well, I will say that we can, we will be providing all PDFs of all this, so you can look at it later. Because I tried to maximize the art, it was a little small, so if there's any.
Run where dispute, please. Okay.
Anyway, we'll provide you copies of these, so you'll have.
Well, if they're in the shared drive, that should be good.
Yeah, yeah.
And if you want to make.
They're not yet, but they will. Okay, so John's going to start with the animal shelter project and just tell me when you want me to change the slide and I will.
So first on this is the animal shelter project, I think some of us or all of us left the site a couple of weeks ago.
Yep.
Just some quick facts for our animal shelter, we currently have one animal control officer, Stephen, we met up at the site. Reading loses space from us, they use it for their animal control. We board approximately 70 to 80 animals a year.
Wow.
Current facility is 12 kennels, it was built in 74, the garage portion was built in 82, don't know how that came to be. The current facility is grandfathered in, but we don't need any of the current codes that Department of Agriculture has. There's still a history, change slide, Eric. Little project history, in 2017, it seems like some town staff looked at potential for renovating the building. I can't find what he got this applied. 2019, town staff had some concept drawings to demolish the saliport, the garage and build a new one. It never happened. And then 2024, this project came back to life with me and Kathy. We explored some facilities of recently built animal control facilities, Danbury and Dawes, which is right across from the site. We then met with Stephen at ACO when we kind of put together a conceptual plan based off of current regs, some things that he would like. And that's where we're at now, now we're passing it off, probably well to, to manage, change the slide, Eric. So this is the site plan from 1974, it's essentially the same as what's out there right now. You'll notice the small structure at the kind of apex of the parking area, it's an old pump house, the water department uses it, it's officially abandoned. So that will get removed as part of this project, or maybe you can. This is from, this is from before when the garage was added, so this is just basically the steel or the building and the parking area.
Yeah, you can see the contours up there as it slopes down and it says swamp.
Swamp back there.
Yeah.
What's the building in the front, though? I know the wellhouses, but yeah, what is that?
I think that's.
I can't see that.
Just, I think it's the call out. Something in the box. Monument, there's like a monument sign out there.
It's just a note. It's not a building.
Hop to the next slide, Eric.
Yes.
And again, here's this building, the drawings from the current building, just to give you reference, not, I think that'd be no surprises here, the steel or the building is the whole story, we're all inside. So you can hop to the next slide. This is the drawing for the dishing. Just the concrete, concrete base of the structure, the CME structure, right, so. You can hop to the next slide, Eric. So this is the current floor plan, I know we went there, but the basics, 12 kennels, office, kitchen, and some storage areas along with the vehicle, solid doors.
So to the right of this slide is the front of the building.
Yeah, at the front, and then we entered.
We got it down here on the bottom left with a garage doors.
So you can, this is kind of the work with, so you can hop to the next slide, Eric. This is the concept I mentioned earlier about removing the saliport and building a new one. Not sure how this came up or why this was in discussion, which is something that was looked at. That's really only from kind of listening.
Well, basically, I can just see the one on the left shows demolishing the garage that's there and just kind of moving it. If you look to the right, moving it over to the right, connecting it, basically to get it away from the small.
Probably was falling on.
That was the idea.
So we met with Stephen Chanley, the animal control officer, we kind of developed like a wish list for the new building. I'll go through some of this stuff, you can review it, what you have, but some of the major ones are natural light, there's requirements for light for the dogs that are boarded. And it's better to have natural light versus leaving the lights on 24/7. Full block walk construction between kennels, which keeps dogs from barking at each other, the current facilities, like chain fence or whatever. The drainage grates for waste to be on the outside of the kennels, that goes to the inside, radiant heating in the floors for the outdoor runs of dogs can use it in winter. Something Danbury's facility has, at least 12 kennels with two oversized kennels and a room for small animals, you does get bunnies and other critters like that. Quarantine kennels, large toilets, I don't know if you noticed it, the current facilities, oversized toilet that you can flush waste down, and it goes right to the sewer system. Bathing tub, laundry, food prep, kitchenette area for staff, refrigerator, office space for yourself and Reading ACL, bathroom with shower. Locker facilities, he does go out on site and counter skunks and easy to sit animals, so it's nice to have that facility currently, the officer goes to the police department to clean up. Storage, course, spaces that are flexible, as we don't really know the future use of this, you know, it might grow, might take on volunteers, things like that. Space for a freezer for dead animals. Outdoor space for exercise, and he did mention, and I'm not sure if this might not be our territory, but kind of rearranging the lease agreement with Reading, I think they don't, they don't pay a whole lot for animal, that's something we'll get worked on, you can hop to the next slide. So as I mentioned, Kathy and I took some, took a few tours of other facilities, this is inside Danbury's facility. These are their kennels, they're really, really nice, you can see that they got a carabiner hook, you pull on that, it opens the trap door so that animal can go outside and get fresh air. It's just like a safe way to open the doors out going in. This has the full CME block partition between kennels, which keeps dogs from barking at each other, even if you do a, like a, a knee wall, they can still jump and it's, it's kind of a headache. So those are some of the highlights that Stephen liked from Danbury, he can, again, a few more shots of inside, go to the next slide, Eric. One, this is one of the features that we liked was the kind of clear story, it's like a two-story, like, you know, one story of usable space, but two stories to get that light in. You can see the lights are actually off over there, really, really nice, that natural light for the animals, good quality of light, while they're standing there, you can hop to the next slide. Some of the things that Danbury kind of planned when they were doing it was really wide corridors, they move animals through here. Sometimes they're dangerous animals, they want space where they could shelving if they need extra storage, so just thinking about that kind of flexible, you don't need a closet where you can put some shelving here to hold dogs. Just some things that they like, hop to the next slide. Again, flexible, this is laundry, storage, and you can't see where there's a desk for the volunteer to sit there. So they're really just keeping these spaces flexible. Next slide. These are the outdoor runs, so the little partition door you saw on the inside, that lets the animal have here, these need to be covered and jump proof, if you will. Inside of those, the floors are radiant heat, so in the winter the animals are outside, you can see in Danbury, they're out there all winter, it looks like they're patient to be, but the floor is heated.
But that's open all through, you don't even let them out one at a time, the animals or?
So, inside each of those pens, that's considered the outdoor space.
Right.
And they can't escape.
Yeah.
When Stephen is cleaning, he might, or when these guys are cleaning, they might let the animal into the kind of.
Outside.
Outside area.
Outside space.
Yeah. But generally that fence is there to protect the public from getting too close to them. I'm going to hop on to the next slide, Eric. And again, we reviewed with Stephen and in developing kind of concepts, just, I won't kind of go through all these, but there's a whole slew of Department of Agriculture regulations for animal shelters. Stephen was savvy on it, we integrated them when we were going through this, a lot of it is just like square footage size for kennels, dividers, quarantine space, things like that, even down to material fence, but whoever hire. The local stuff up in Shreve, so you can skip these next few slides, Eric. Just wanted to point out. So other considerations we, we were kind of toying with is the new facility should have space for temporary emergency shelter for animals, like natural disasters, flooding, wizards, power allergies. I think the soliport is oversized, you can set up temporary kennels there, just something to think about. And then just kind of future-proofing the bills, who knows, next time we're going to get another chance to develop this. Currently it's only Stephen, but we might have volunteers, there might be another CEO or ACL or part-time ACL. Maybe Reading has a part-time work as well, maybe they do other kind of events, kind of adopt advanced vaccination plans, these are things other facilities do, just to think about for the future.
But right now, you don't have volunteers.
No, no, I, I think it would be a safety issue, given the, our building.
Right, okay.
There's just something, one more thing for Stephen to manage, these are.
Right, because he would have to train them.
Yeah. And, yeah, giving them a key and all that stuff could be the whole, the whole thing. So these are the concept plans, and you can look at them closely when you're reviewing. Not on screen here, but essentially we set the, set the plan up with all the kennels on the backside of the building, just basically animals away from the street, set race the animals from the office space, because it can get noisy. And this is essentially Danbury's setup, except there, they have mirrored, mirrored houses, they have 24 kennels. It seemed to work really well, the kind of two bank, two kennel bank system is nice, because if you only have four or five dogs, you can shut down one, use it for storage. If you have influx of dogs, you have a lot of space. Some of the things that we've added that we currently don't have, ADA restroom, locker room with a shower, small animal room and a nice wash tub and things like that, like Danbury has. Other than that, it's pretty, pretty bare bones, one of the office, the area on the left there, just a certain space for mechanical plumbing, whatever have you. And then we just kept this big open space for meat and grease, because sometimes animals get adopted out. Laundry, washing, food prep, things like that, but aside from that, the corridors are very nice applied. And then within the kennel bank, the space outside of the echo panels is nice applied. For, you can do rolling cards for food prep, you need hoses and things to wash stuff down, so there's plenty of room.
John, this, this area at the top, this fenced-in area, would that be like a concrete kind of sidewalk type?
Yeah, it would be.
Just like we saw in.
Just, just like a Danbury kind of concrete perimeter.
How, how many kennels do we have today?
We have 12.
Oh, okay, so this is.
Yeah, same number.
But not these oversized ones, these six by tens?
I think we have one or two overs. We have one or two oversized. Currently we have one or two, I think, and we have one quarantine kennel.
And we have no outdoor section.
Yeah, and in this, I think Stephen said that if this configuration, if you use a block wall between all the kennels, technically they're all quarantine kennels, because they're, you know, fully.
They can't climb out or anything.
Yeah, yeah.
And they had, each kennel had like a roof on it, too.
Yeah, yeah. Exactly. So, yeah, this is just the first pass, again, non-architect, we're just trying to take code, Stevens, or kind of ideas and put them on the plan and see how they fit. Of course, a real architect can figure out some efficiencies and things like that, but we just wanted to see how much square foot you get away with and things like that.
So what size is, it's 40 by?
It's 40 by 86.
The current one was a 30 something by six, I think.
70 by, by 30.
It's just the.
Here's a, here's a side by side. And we're, we're including the soliport in this, where there's.
Yes, this is like really outdoor space.
Yeah, it's covered, it has to be covered, though.
It's kind of.
Yeah, I mean, it makes sense to me, it's.
Yeah.
It's not heated, though.
It's.
It's got the.
Well, the floor, the radiant, the floor is.
The outside, if you get Danbury, even the sidewalk, that, that sidewalk area is heated as well, I think he said, because of the fact of keeping the place safe when they're out during the winter, trying to clean up.
They need to clean every day, so they're using, they're spraying the sidewalks down, and it just, it just helps.
Yeah, it was.
Yeah, and they're not going to throw salt where the dogs are. So you can hop to the outside.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah. Was running in.
You can jump them outside, Eric. Again, this is just, just trying to fit it on the site, just playing with some parking in the building, obviously we have some constraints, it needs to get looked at closer. The reason why I toyed with this was we want to see if we can keep existing facility open during construction, so not building on the exact site where the old one is. But again, this is just, just a fitting exercise, not a, not a official concept.
Right, yeah. We could have the building closer to the road.
Bridge to the road, you know, I also tried observing the proper setback, the property line is actually kind of wonky here.
I guess the parking in the back, though, that'd be, they'd be facing the dogs, right? So I don't know if you really want parking behind the building, I guess to make it work.
Yeah, we have some other constraints that you'll see.
Well, yeah, yeah, the only thing I'll point out on this slide is if you see the property line down here, you can, there is a lot of space to the left and to the right, I don't know, I haven't really looked that closely, I don't know if, it's obviously wooded. I don't know if it's madder, just cutting out some trees and you have land or if it's.
Yeah, it's a usable space.
Yeah, I'm not really.
I have some wetlands, yeah, the wetlands.
Yeah, I mean, that is. That's a small little.
Army corn engineers, the whole side of the street, I think so.
Well.
Should I? Okay, so, oh, this is.
Some other considerations, if possible, I had mentioned, keep the facility open during construction, the entire site's in a flood zone and the site is adjacent to wetlands, I think the site was still.
Yeah.
We'll see the wetland map, so we're not within 100-foot buffer, so that, this is the wetland map.
So this, this here is the, is the current building?
Yeah, it looks like the soliport, I mean, I know these maps aren't perfect.
Dark areas of soliport.
Those are, those are existing wetlands.
Is there another one?
Yeah, hop to the next slide.
Yeah.
This is the FEMA flood map, so that stripe is the regulatory floodway.
Would that be difficult to get approval with that being like the FEMA flood map, like to move the building on its piece of property, would there be additional regulations or do you have to?
We definitely have to go through inland wetlands.
Yeah, I know that, but I mean, like, government, like the.
I'm not sure.
I don't know if that works.
Would we be able to even get to inland wetlands, is this going to fly with?
The other governmental, not the town.
Yeah.
Regulations.
I think the very worst is tapping insurance on this building. Yeah.
Yeah. Well, they would, they would just pay more for it. Like the rest of those neighbors do, I think.
So. People are.
What could you raise to do?
All that stuff, I mean, all the way down.
I guess. Yeah.
Well, do you see that? Parlowa, like all those have, like this kind of. I know all that's in a flood plan, I think.
Yeah, insurance or something.
Do that, not get in trouble.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, we can see the saliport is.
Yeah. I just don't know how that works.
John, do you know the difference between these hatches? I know this.
So the, the, that's the regulatory floodway, which is the stripe.
Yeah.
And that's a FEMA designation.
Yeah, so the blue is the 100-year storm.
This one is 100-year storm.
Yeah, and red, yellow is like, I mean, orange is a 0.2% chance annually.
Okay.
Okay, so then I think I may answer my own question. If Dawes just built their whole facility in a floodway, I'm sure it's.
They renovated, though. I didn't build it.
Yeah, they did renovate.
You can build.
They renovated.
You can build them here, it's just, I, yeah, but you can build them that, but again, insurance becomes, sometimes the only people that'll insure you is FEMA.
Yeah, yeah.
Because I have.
That's really expensive.
And that's, I mean, that is ridiculous.
Right, right, right.
Because I have a building that's built right on the side of the Still River. And it's, they're FEMA's, the only people that will insure you, they have private insurance.
If you have a house or a building that you own for the mortgage, you have to have a flood insurance. You just own something outright, you don't always need flood insurance, but your regular insurance might be like, I don't know. Yeah, they want you to have, because the flood insurance is always separate.
Yeah.
It really doesn't cover everything.
I have a question, so we seem to be married to this exact site, is there any other town land that could build something, you know, without it being?
We've, we've gone through that as well, we didn't include that in this presentation, we probably should have talked a little bit about that, but we've, we've gone through that discussion since Matt Nickerbocker was here and unless somebody has any town, oh, you have a site in the month.
I already, I mentioned it to Dan, but I'm not, I'm not going to say it out loud.
Really not.
It's not something we need to, but there is another site.
Could play hot and cold, then.
It's on the other side of the.
I mean, that was, that's really not.
We're, that was another thing that came up with the Highway Garage, too.
Right.
Because we were like, can we just build a new building somewhere else?
Maybe cheaper.
Well, it's, yeah, I mean, that's something somebody, all right, has to, you know, if we needed to look at that, but back when we were doing, oh, the police station. One of the things that came up was, can we add on to what was there, can we blow off whatever, but that's, gets flooded, too. So the needs assessment study that we were doing included having the people that were doing it would review three sites for us and give us their opinion as to whether it would work or not. So two members of the commission spent a chunk of time in the assessor's office and made this, at the time, there was no, like, let's just pull up a list of all the properties in town that are owned by the town. And they went through and made this list, like, probably have a copy of it somewhere. And we were looking at a couple of different places that the town already owned, because we weren't given the directive to outlay them.
Right.
We don't want to add that in, you got something, so, so I don't know how, like, who.
Well, I, I, I think that's a really good consideration and let's not overlook that, we did kind of go through that, but that's not to say that we've exhausted every possibility.
Right.
The good thing about the concept that John shared, you know, we can actually go anywhere, it's a building. The one thing that pops into my mind, and I think this may have come up before, maybe this is what you're thinking, I don't know, is there is some space, I think, near the current police station, and I know that I pops in my head, somebody was saying at some point, oh, why didn't we put that next to the police station? Because. Janley, he's a police officer technically, you know, and he's a part of that. So. I don't know. I know there's a lawn area. I don't know how big it is up there, kind of between this.
You can't have the front lawn, nobody's gonna like.
I'd say we'll speculate on a second.
Yeah.
Location. Um, for the needs assessment for the police station, we determined ultimately that there was no way they were doing addition on that site.
Um, it was the, the, that, um, architectural firm that did the needs assessment study. And, um, some input from. Couple of people, I think. Who was building inspector at the time? He. I think.
As soon as they do.
What's that?
He's retired, so it's twenty years.
But it was like. Twenty years ago when we were working on it. So, yeah. So there, and, um, with input from a couple of different people when that building was built and how. Um. How's the foundation put in? Some, somebody found old. Way back, it was twenty thousand four or five, something. Uh. That it was determined. So there's two, two things. That came up. The biggest one was. Where did, where, where does the police department work while we're. Going up, out, back, whatever. Because the needs assessment study actually took that property. And it was before we put that. Little garage and parking recce house back there. And, and if we went back that way with parking. That was doable because we needed X number of parking spaces for the size of the building that they came up with. It wasn't the same. Configuration. It was just going to be a big rectangular building. Adding up and adding back. Um. So the, the way the place flooded. Was something that had to be taken into consideration because it does, the building would flood.
Yeah, I, I don't know. I mean, I'm not doubting you, but I always thought it was a sewer that backed up flooding.
Well, but it would back up because of the flood. And it would flood in front of it too. I mean, you couldn't, sometimes they would close from Punching Road there to go through.
Yeah.
Cause it's low. Um, so that, and then, um. The, the biggest thing was where, how. Trying to come up with a way. To work on the building to make it. Bigger. While the police department was operating there. And.
Yeah, it did make, you'd have to.
The biggest.
House right there on that corner is, that just wouldn't have worked yet.
It, it was a lot of different things. And one of the, one of the things was, oh, well, what if we just tore the whole building down and build a whole new one? Where does the police department go that? And then you end up with, you gotta locate them somewhere in Bethel. And viability issues of transporting, like where do you put prisoners? Who's gonna build a jail cell or two in a. Warehouse somewhere that you use as a police station. There was a lot of stuff that came into it. So there was a lot of input from a lot of different, um, sources.
So no dog pound where that's the police station was. No dog pound where the old police station.
Well, there's an idea.
Tom, I think you brought up, as soon as they do the testing on the soil.
Well, that's what I'm saying. Just get a simple engineer to do some.
So there was, I, I believe at some point there were some borings that were done.
Okay.
Like just kind of a few around the building at the old police station that kind of said, I don't know about really doing it. Could you put a second floor on something like that? Would it start sinking? That, I remember now that came up. So.
Kind of answered the question. So right now, it's a building, it's a Bethel facility. And there's some type of lease screen, a chair with Reading. Has anybody approached Reading and said, if you build one? Will lease pay for half or something like, you know, I'm just saying, cause they may have.
We did mention in the meeting, yeah.
I don't know how legal that is. I'm, I'm just trying to just flip it.
Dan is aware, but I don't know if he's.
I know, I knew someone. What I heard was, are you as much greater?
Yeah, Reading only brings a few animals.
So are. Whereas they only come into Bethel, so.
Okay, I just.
Yeah, yeah.
Because they may have a dry, a dry line, a wet line.
Yeah, right, right. Yeah, they might own a piece of property close to the border.
So it seems like what the first thing we need to do. Is. I think one of the, I mean, you'd have a concept site plan. Sort of concept building plan.
Is there more, Tom?
Yeah, I mean, so we.
I think we're almost done.
We have a couple more slides. Only two more slides. Uh, so we're kind of answering these questions too. So what we currently have, we have Stephen, ACL's wish list, we have standards. We have some recent local examples, which I'll, another slide that lists them out. We have some conceptual brainstorming type plans. Uh, what we need, the architects, we do site borings, we just got our site conditions here. When you put out a bid, construction administration. Sign with the bid and get built. That's a more practical, essentially.
And we'll, we'll add a site assessment. We can add a site assessment.
I think before you go to an architect, I think you go to a civil engineer.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So that might be.
Is this like the minimum of what we would say we need? Like, cause to go to a civil engineer and say this is the square footage we're looking at, you think that that's the minimum square footage?
Oh, what we found out.
Yeah, that's probably the minimum, right?
Yeah.
So that's the footprint. So, I mean, you don't really need a. Like to Tom's point, if you go to a civil engineer, they'll be able to tell you if that site can hold the building.
Yes.
And then my other question was, if you move it. But the orientations, but if you move it towards the wooded area. Um, is there an issue, a setback issue with? Uh, the condos there?
Yeah, let me just go back. I think I would assume that this blue extends up. What I'm saying, I don't think you're gonna, you're not, you're not gonna get out of that zone by going to the woods.
And the condos are, they're close, but I think there's quite a bit between the two. Piece of pride.
We know it's a lot.
Is it still considered?
Is it?
Yeah, it extends plant south here and it goes up a little more north too.
On, so you're right. I think you need to see if you could first put a building there, I guess.
Yeah.
Before you decide to design a building that.
I mean, a foot or a foot or two of elevation could make a big.
Yeah.
That's true.
Yeah. Well, I know, I know, speaking of that, I know that, um. They are considering building senior housing on the former police station site. And they're. I don't think it's the whole things in this flood zone. I think only like that portion, but. They were saying the same thing, just no basement, put it up a little bit, then you might get around it.
Closer to the road, you know, because that's a big parking lot to throw up the old police station that, you know.
Yeah, it would have to be close to the road because there's actually a creek back there if you go.
Yeah.
It's not too far back. Anyway, and then I think this is our last slide.
These, these are just recent, uh, some of the recent facilities that have been, um. Constructed with, uh, Kathy and I visited, yeah, uh, new town in Danbury and Dawes. Uh, the former county engineer works for Monroe, he sent over the drawings for their facility. Uh, theirs is pretty bare bones. We've got some good examples in the text that, um, worked on. So.
So we've worked with Chikonski Homes, they did the police station and the training range.
Oh.
They do, so you'll find, that was one of really one of my questions is, do you know of? Architects who specialize in. Chikonski Homes I know specializes in, um. Municipal and public safety buildings. They've done a lot of police stations, fire stations and other municipal type buildings. So. They have that knowledge background. I don't know anything. Well, Friar.
I, I, I believe Friar has on their website a portfolio of just animal type.
Okay.
More, um, not so much public. Kind of animal control facility. They have like adoption centers and. Things like that, vet dairy offices.
Yeah, but it looks, there's four architects right there, right?
So then, is there a, um, common square footage charge? For this type of a building, you know, for an animal control? I was just curious. Or are they all? Different, of course they're different, but maybe there's a. You know, so much square foot based on.
I mean, I guess it depends on the man. I mean, Danbury's is essentially double what the proposed plan that you have here. Um, so I'm not sure. I got.
Yeah, one thing we were, we were thinking about adding, just didn't have time, was the total cost for each of those facilities. So. We can, we can get that.
Danbury was from the public, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Obviously the big thing is the year, right? Twenty nineteen to now is, I think.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And so. Just for last year.
But yeah, size, that's the thing we definitely do that way. And you said that, that one didn't have a lot of, where it was kind of bare bones, you mentioned.
And it's the renovate, isn't it?
It, it was more of a renovation.
And you counted it or that was renovated?
That's brand new. Uh, I believe, I want to say that cost of one point three million. I've got that so far.
Yeah.
I know. And they also, they also have a dog park. Uh, there's, it's a.
Yeah, it's nice, it's nice.
It's not as nice as Danbury's though. Danbury's is by far.
I mean, that dog park.
Yeah, but I'm just saying as far as, uh. Facility and safety and. It's just.
Yeah, Danbury. Both thought out, white always.
Yeah.
Yeah, Danbury's is called, it was very. Utilitarian in a good way, you know?
Yeah.
Where Dawes was extremely cramped.
Dawes was an addition, a renovation too, right?
Yeah.
And they just completed that though. So I don't know, twenty twenty-two is, uh, for Dawes seems like it's. They just finished that, right? Like that.
Yeah, I, I think.
Maybe when they started.
Yeah, the design, the drawings that we have, we have the drawings.
Okay.
They were, they were stated twenty, I think Dawes finished pretty recently.
Yeah.
Even Danbury.
So.
Two thousand nineteen. Yeah.
Yes.
Does. Does the public works have? The money set aside to start on this or anything or?
Um. No. Okay. You could. Brad, maybe you learn something, but I'm seeing our.
So eventually this may have to go to like a town. A referendum or something?
It depends on.
I think that's if it's over a million, right?
It's over a million. But if you, so if we were, if we're thinking, you know, your list that you've had there of.
Where you want me to go back?
Next steps, yeah.
Oh.
Um, and so we need, yes, architect for site planning.
Site assistant.
A building design, yes. Do we, do we also need an, um, owner's rep or owner's project manager? Or is that gonna be? So I'm gonna think about it, you know.
It's not it.
Well, I will, I will say, you know, we're gonna try and stay involved. I mean, obviously kind of try and pass it to us, but al- also, and. We're not gonna just leave you with this and, and walk away. We're here, obviously Kathy's at twenty years anyway. We'll try to attend and. You know, stay involved. At, at least an advisory. Um. But, yeah, I mean.
Can, can you put these slides? Into the folder for the annual, you know, just so.
Yes.
We have reference.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I have construction drawings for Danbury, for Dawes and Monroe. I'm just seeking to see. Actually.
I mean, I think what you had done with the cat is enough to give an engineer and say, here's.
Yeah.
Here's the concept.
Here's the square.
Here for you. Yeah, exactly.
Yeah. So. We could, and I don't know how we would get to it, but.
I saw the condition of that.
We could.
Yeah.
And we're just looking for. A civil engineer, site planner, somebody. Along in McRone, what are they called now? SR?
SLR.
SLR. We would have to. Put some kind of something together, RFP or whatever. Or ask for, if it's under a certain amount, we can ask several companies for folks. For what we want, but we have to be specific on what we want. That's where we're gonna start. And then if site works great, then we're gonna go further and. Allow an RFP for an architect or if the plans are gonna cost less than that, whatever that amount is, then. We can get proposals. I think, I think it's fifty thousand. Anything over that, I'll put an RFP out, go through that whole process. And if we do the plans first, then we end up with. In- including in what we want with the plans. Some kind of a cost estimate, because then we're gonna have to go and go through the process of. Or some more finance and. Probably a referendum.
Yeah.
Or a special.
Well, we'll, we're gonna actually talk about similar things as we get. But, um, it sounds like what you're saying, start with a. And I'm just kind of throwing this thinking out loud, but you kind of start with this site and kind of just get a yes, no. And then if it's a no, then do a.
Yeah, cause.
A broader site assessment.
The set of plans, if it doesn't go here.
Well, I would. Chicken and egg thing, you know, I mean.
I would get a proposal to do two sites.
Well, what I, what I, I know, we really haven't done that. We really haven't got, like you said, you went to the assessor and you're like, I've got town properties. Acre, she can just do minimum size, what we got. I don't think it's a lot, but I, I will, we didn't, we didn't go to that level. We didn't do like.
And it's a long list because there's, you know, when you do a little development, you've got to either give the town money or give them a little piece of land. Sometimes it's just a little triangle.
Yes, you really probably need a minimum piece of accessibility, I guess, right?
How much, how much acreage you need for.
Right.
You don't want something like in chimney heights behind somebody's house or something, right? You want something that's actually like narrow that down to a couple of reasonable.
Plus, if Reading still has it, they don't want to have to try, try. No, I'm just saying, you know.
Well, I think they, they have to have one, so. I don't think, I don't think they have much to say as far as where we put it or how we do it.
Unless they're paying.
Well, you make them.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah.
I don't, you know, was we have to decide like that first step thing now, like how we're gonna do it? I guess if you want to finish your.
No, I'm just, I was just gonna say that one. Sure.
Yeah, we do have to, we do have to, I think your idea, yeah, we gotta look at some sites. Or at least the one.
Yeah, if this is even, you know, viable, right?
Right.
Yeah, cause what would you say you have for a lifespan on a. Two years?
It's already dead.
I was gonna say, that's what the animal control office said, it's already maxed.
Right. Now until construction.
We're just hanging on, you know.
Yeah. Until the next flood.
So.
Sure. Well, dogs get fluid, right?
So, no, but I, I, I just reiterate, we, we didn't do that. We didn't do a site assessment, so I think that's important. Yeah. Um, okay, so.
He has funds to set aside to do that?
No.
Yeah, see that's shot. So like, how does that work, right? Like, you know, you need the viability on the site. Is that going to the board of finance? Just getting some quotes and saying, hey, we need to do some. Support.
I mean, yeah, that, that's what we would normally do. Even, even if, even if it's not over fifty thousand and you're forced to get a bid, they'd like us to get.
Yes.
Yeah, a couple. Yeah, yeah, no. Sometimes makes sense.
So if we got a couple, then we would have to go to, I think, divorce like first to say this, and then they would send it to the board of finance. And say yes or no or.
Yeah, so we go with the words like, and then they recommend.
Plus, there's the wellhouse right there now, that needs to, like, is that cat? Like, how does that work, like, taking it apart?
My understanding is that it's closed and shut down, but it's just a. A matter of demolishing it and closing out the paperwork with deep. That's my understanding. Those of us with the experience with that kind of thing.
Like, we.
I have asked.
The one on Reservoir Street, like, what did that, because they closed that one down. Castle Brothers on the left, there was a pop house there.
Just, just one last question, if for some reason uh there was a fire at existing flooded damage or something like that. What would the founder of that do? I, I, I'm just throwing this out, would we, emergency, go to Danbury, say, please, can we? Use it, would we go to?
That's like any, that's like any existing building, right? There's an issue there, they have three of them.
Is there like a portable one that they bring in or something? Maybe that's.
How big's your garage, Roger?
It's a sealed floor, so.
I think we talked about this, but we, there have been discussions between the first life and Eric Danbury about using that facility, but.
All emergency.
Well, I, I mean, I, well, before we even got to this, we did say, oh, why don't we just pay a brand new.
Yeah, we need to bring that off, it didn't seem like.
Some, like, some, but some, at some point, someone would realize some of it. A lot of this, and no one wanted to really, Danbury's. They, they have a ton of animals.
Yeah, no, I can imagine, yeah, okay.
And maybe an emergency.
Yeah, that was donated, the, the embrace was donated too.
Okay, uh, all right, I'll try to go. Quickly through this, uh, interesting time, so. This is the aerial view of the highway garage, uh, north is up in this, in this image, so. You guys were all there, you can see, um. You can see, just so you know, with the salt shed is in the bottom right down here. And there's also kind of a storage facility. Kind of like a carport type thing. Here's a, here's a view, um, looking from, from the east, the north is to the right. The original uh building is from nineteen seventy seven, that's the bulk of it here, that's kind of backwards L shape. And then there was an addition in nineteen eighty six, nineteen eighty six back here. Just to cut, just two more bays. Here's the original plan, we were able to dig up, uh, for the original building from nineteen seventy seven. Actually not sure who drew this plan. Um, we, we do know Borgesi, uh, I think we had mentioned Borgesi, the, the pre, uh, pre-engineered building manufacturer. Like I said, they're still around, they drew the foundation plan for this. And there was an MEP stuff that drew, uh, drew up the, uh, MEP drawings. Uh, but it, it's kind of unknown to what extent it really was a Borgesi building, it probably could use their custom pre-engineered components. Um, from what we can tell, but it's kind of an incomplete scan of, it's not even in order, it's just probably sitting in. Bottom of a closet. This addition is definitely all Borgesi design. Um, this one's from nineteen eighty six. Um, we have that. Okay, so just to kind of reiterate, wh- what is the need for this product? Um, I know we did talk about this a little bit before, but I'll just reiterate, so the roof. Um, there's an ongoing expense of continual repairs, we keep patching things, our, our regular roofing contractor offshore construction. As Kathy knows, they're constantly coming to us with proposals to make repairs to this roof and pointing out all the problems with it. The steel structure, so, so these are also the kind of the three components of the project, as I mentioned last time. Uh, the structure. As I said, the architect's concern is if we get a heavy snow with the, you know. Hopefully very rare and unlikely, but still possible combination of conditions of wet snow that could. Collapse the roof, that's a concern, that's really probably the biggest driver. And then, of course, uh, we, while we're doing this, we wanted to add in sprinklers as an insurance policy for all the equipment in there, that's really kind of. You know, irreplaceable in a way, I mean, a lot of our trucks are custom, it's not like you can just. Go to the nearest lot and pick up a bunch of dump trucks, they're hard to get. Um, I'll just give a couple of examples, who are the highway garage that caught on fire in Linden, New York in twenty twenty two, they lost a lot of equipment. And the one, the really scary one is in, uh, twenty twelve, Washington, Connecticut, their entire highway garage burned down. They lost their entire fleet, so that was a big mess. Our garage, all of our new trucks have computers in them, I mean, there's at least three million dollars of trump, dump trucks in there, probably more, but. Probably a little ball, but there's a lot of stuff, not just the trucks, so, anyway, um, that's, that's why we wanna do those three things.
Yeah, I mean, the trucks you can just park outside, right? That gets rid of the risk, I mean, if you're worried about the sprinklers, park the trucks outside, right? Uh, I mean, I can see when you do, I can see when you do the roof to do the sprinklers, I'm just saying, that's the big concern is the sprinkler.
Oh, I mean, during, during the construction.
No, I just mean in general, like, if it's that big of an issue, then leave the trucks outside, right? If you, I'm saying if the sprinkler, I mean, obviously it makes sense to do it with the roof, but I'm just, you, you're pointing that out, I'm like, you could just leave vehicles outside if you wanted to. Um, if you're concerned about a fire.
Well, no, I know, we're not concerned about, no, I'm just, that's just the justification, we're not concerned about it in fire necessarily.
I'm just saying, it, it makes complete sense, I'm just saying, like, you know, as far as this.
Yeah, can I ask, um, who, who's the architect that's concerned? Uh, it's, we're working with Gary Tarantino. So, and we'll get to that, we, you know, we don't have to only take his opinion.
No, no, I just didn't know.
Yeah.
Yeah, Eric will get to it, that's who we, the town originally engaged years, years ago to assess the building.
Oh, so that's kind of.
It get, it gets complicated, we, I, I try to make.
Which building, which building? Edition, the eighty, so I mean, there's three different ones, there's essentially.
I'll, I'll get, I'll, I think we'll answer that as, as we go forward. Um, so anyway, these are just some examples of the ongoing roof repairs, you can see there's corrosion, you can see there's standing water up there. Um, just, just some more of them, there, there's a lot of spot repairs all over the place, and see some more standing water there, so. You know, just. We're, we're spending money, I think we just spent another seven thousand on, on repairs just, just the other day.
It's a rubber roof.
I'm not sure.
I mean, if the roof looked like the rest of the building, then I'm not surprised that it's, you know.
So.
So these panels are integral to the structure, there is a diaphragm, they call it. I don't know if that's to add rigidity to the panels or.
Yeah, hopefully, okay, yeah, hopefully we'll answer these questions. Uh, so some of the challenges, it's custom, it's proprietary components, um. Mostly the Borges's pre-engineered structural elements, as we mentioned. This is just a snapshot from. Um, the engineer's assessment that was done in twenty seventeen. And then here's project history, hopefully you can read that, again, like I said, we'll provide, um. Provide a copy to some drive for those of you like myself, or I have trouble reaching that small font, but. Um, not to really belabor this, but it's kind of been a start and stop for, for this product for a while, there was, um. Really, it started with offshore, um, roofing and construction, they had. Various proposals going back as far as twenty fourteen. There was some column repair done in twenty sixteen. Um, and then it was the, really the structural. And the kind of the unfortunate thing about this, and the reason we really wanted to reignite this and do everything in one shot, is that. Um, some of this has already been done before, so in twenty seventeen, there was a structural assessment report done. Um, there was also an architectural assessment report done. Um, the structural was by Quono Engineering, the architectural was like Gary, Gary Tarantino Architecture. Um, there was a. The fire protection plan, I don't know if that was a design John, what, but, um.
Yes.
Then it was, uh, it was some well testing done in twenty eighteen and asbestos testing, also in, in eighteen. I think Nancy, you were aware of that.
Those two things were, I guess, in preparation for further work on the roofs.
Yeah. So.
Asbestos test.
Yeah, so we, we should not have to do that again, um, that's been done.
Okay.
Um.
If you have the report, then that gets put out.
Yeah. So. In twenty eighteen, there were actually bid documents for, um. For structural reinforcing, which when we, when we restarted this just this year, we uncovered those. And we talked to, so. I'll have a, a slide of this, but essentially, we, we were talking to, you know, the team that was kind of put together back then was Gary Tarantino, was the architect. Well, no engineering was the engineer, and, um, I forget who their MEP was, but, um.
Same, same.
Oh, it's general drafting and designs, general drafting and design was the MEP, so. Um. That, the MEP was just doing, uh, like, um. Uh, roof penetrations and, and they were gonna replace a few fans. Um. So, when we came back, this time, we got in touch with Gary Tarantino and we said, well, wait, we have these bid documents from twenty eighteen. He was not comfortable, or I, I don't know if he spoke to the engineer, but he, I think he, I think he reached out to Quono. Anyway, they were not comfortable with, with using those documents, basically their, their response was, well, conditions. Have changed since then. Been so many years. Um, you can't rely on that. Um. Like I said, this. It was an RFP that went out, there was, um, some other drawings that were done, there was actually a proposal for. The construction of the structural, and that's when it installed, so, basically. Uh, that was, that was prior to me coming on, I came in, in. I started here basically at the beginning of twenty twenty one. We started looking into it, we had colliers, as you know, they were owners rep, they put together a draft RFP and they put together some cost estimates. As you'll see, when I get into it, those cost estimates came in pretty high. At that point, we kind of stalled again, it was changing first likely, there were some priority shifts, other things were happening, and that, that, the. If you see, I, I think the estimates seem pretty high and everyone.
It seems like you inherited with the project, so this, just trying to figure this out, the, uh.
Yeah, I don't wanna bottom you down with, with the history, but it just, the kind of, I guess, the takeaway. Bottom line is that there's, it goes back a long way, and we want to try, we tried to reuse as much as possible, so.
But it, but doesn't, the building's older, stuff changes, right? So it's not like it's, you know.
Yeah, unfortunately. Yeah, I mean, we were hoping to just take those, those, those drawings and just fill out the.
Didn't you bring up while we were there? On the solar farm, they ran the conduits or the conductors right up to the main panels and stuff. Was the load? The termination done at that time, or they just did it, they, oh, let's just run it a post, you know, I.
I, I don't, I wasn't here, I don't really know the.
I'm not trying to blame anybody, but. Did they just do it and, and not we?
If you see on the top with Eric circling, I found some drawings from twenty eighteen to temporarily shore the. The, the structure, the conduit, um, it's never been done, but we, we have.
And the solar farm was installed.
Well, at least the drawings say twenty seventeen.
Well, but that's yes, because that was, we had, we had to have a referendum that, or maybe it was on the budget. We had a, that we approved that and some other, like three or four different projects on the referend.
That, that may have been what this repair, column repair in twenty sixteen.
Okay. But during this time, you had all these other, you know, police station, school, there are issues, so many other projects that I could see how this kind of got stalled out.
Yeah, yeah, kind of got lost.
And then when you're starting here, like you said, twenty twenty one, it kind of.
But if you have all that stuff, including from colliers, um, that's gonna be helpful to. Whoever's gonna.
Yeah, well, we didn't, we didn't dump it all into the drive, just. Be kind of overwhelming, there's a lot, it's a mess, but, um. We can, we can provide every single thing here, that, I mean, I think we have completely, mostly everything, some of the stuff might be missing, but I think everything since twenty fourteen.
Right.
We should have everything. Um, so then, in February, we reached out, well, actually, February offshore. Provided, well, that's what we're doing now, so these are spot roof repairs, so those are ongoing, they, they, I think they started. Did they give us a proposal in February? Like, maybe that's something else, anyway, they're always giving us proposals for. Track, but, um, they're very good, they're great, actually, offshore is great, they, they're always. I mean, they're good for themselves, they're always looking for problems, but I think they're, they mean well, they mean well. Um, so then, in April, we reached out, um, to Gary Tarantino. About restarting this project. He remembered it well, he had actually kind of, um, basically, in, in twenty nineteen, he, he had a, uh. He had a proposal in hand, it was just never executed. He, he never got started on the design. Um, he, he reached out to Quono Engineering, they were too busy, they're very busy at the moment, so then he brought in Torello Engineering. And brought back in the same MEP, General Drafting and Design. And so these are the three proposals that we have in hand right now, and they're on the drive. Um, the difference being that, um, obviously they've updated the costs, um, but also. Uh, it's now Torello instead of Quono, and I'll, and I'll get into the details on this in a bit, so, and then, but also General Drafting and Design. In addition to doing the MEP for the roof penetrations, also added, um, a sprinkler design. Um, so to kind of. Again, kind of go through the history, just, just so you know what was looked at. Um, there were kind of three options back in twenty seventeen. Uh, the first. Kind of lowest cost was just to apply a roof coating onto the roof. Um, the second option was to install. Insulation and ADPM membrane over the existing roof, um, and this is the one that was selected, so the second option was selected. Basically. Instead of. I don't know where I have it here, maybe from the next one, um, I'll, I'll. Let me just get into some of these questions with the answer to the next slide, but, um. Basically, to put kind of a, a, like a lightweight roof over the existing roof. In, in a sense, um, but that added weight would require structural improvements. And I'll get to why we're doing that in a second, um. And the third option was to replace the metal panels, um. As this, as it says on the next slide, the current roof basically acts as a diaphragm bracing the structure. Um, so removal of the panels would create a problem, you'd have to, if you wanted to, like, take one panel out and put it back in, you have to brace it first, you couldn't. Take them all off at once, you have to do it one at a time. Um, it'd be kind of complicated, and as it says here, it'd be slow and expensive. Um, so that's why we went with the second option. The first option, the thin coating really doesn't address structural problems. And, um, also the third option is, the other reason it's not good is, doesn't address the roof pitch problem. Um.
So these were options that you were given in twenty seventeen, but you didn't do any of them, we didn't do any of them.
Yeah, I'm just, I wanted to give you context so we know, like, what was looked at and what was kind of eliminated.
So we're not. Option to get some momentum and then install, but that's, that's what they, they were pursuing before things.
Cause it sounds like those are just the roof and not the structure and that you, that we need to be. Some major structure.
Oh, yeah. This is just the roof, it's just a roof.
Well, I guess for the replacing the metal panels, since you're not adding weight. It would just, you wouldn't need to touch the structure, I guess, besides the conduit. And then, I think it came up in our walk through, um. Nobody knew how to replace these roof panels, right? Because nobody had talked to Borges.
Um, I don't know, I, I don't know about.
I mean, at some point, all the roof panels are off, structured.
Right. What I'm digging into is.
Yeah, I mean, who, again, we're, this is what's coming from Gary Tarantino, we're not necessarily led to him, I mean. We, we, we'll get to that in the end, I think there's kind of, there's really kind of two options, is to kind of continue to go with him, or.
Yeah, you brought up Dave about the. For, you reach out to Borges and just kind of.
They might have a repair.
I've been trying to reach out to Borges and they just don't. But for someone to advise that it's gonna be slow and expensive, there's a certain way to do it, and they must know how. So Tarantino must have some kind of input.
Idea of.
Yeah. We, we do have his architectural assessment, and we have the structural.
Yeah, yeah, this.
Structural assessment, and it does talk about some of this stuff.
Yeah.
They don't mention, um, that they reached out to Borges or anything.
Okay, right, he might be familiar with it, he has suggestions, um.
Yeah.
Right, I thought there was a conversation that, you know.
Oh, no, I, I, I wouldn't say that. What I think he would, oh, no, I, I mean. I think that as far as the panels, I think. What he meant was someone would have to kind of figure out how to brace them during construction, and you take one out. What kind of bracing would you need, like, what kind of temporary structure would you? I think that's what he's getting at, okay. Um.
It just stresses how integral those panels are, right? You can't just, like you said, you can't take them out, you gotta brace it.
They don't just pop, you know, exactly. Um, so again, th- this is all, we're trying to kind of summarize this, and, and you can, we'll give you the assessment, absolutely. Um. Uh, but anyway, just, i- it is, you know, kind of high level. Um. Basically, uh, what he wanted to do was, instead of re- replacing those panels, basically adding new metal panels over the damaged ones. Uh, two inch of foam in the hollows and, and applying, uh, EDPM over that. Um, installing new gutters, getting rid of the old integral gutter system. Uh, remove the existing, um. Whatever the details of the parapet wall, I, I, I can go back here just to remind you guys. It's probably in this image, so you know, I don't know, there's this parapet wall here. Um, this between. It's all, was all the original one building, but it's between these two sections of the building.
It's a CMU block, well, I think it's for fire, so if, if there is a fire.
Like, yeah, firewall.
Yeah, exactly.
Cause that building was at a different time, right?
No.
Everything in Orange is built together.
Yeah, it was all built together, but I'm not sure why this was here.
Because the trucks were up.
The right side has all the offices and stuff.
Yeah, yeah, amazing.
It could have been that, yeah. Um, and this, as you can kind of see, this is more of a, a flat roof, there is a slight pitch over to this, not super steep, but. You can kind of see it. Um, anyway, getting back to. Where we were.
I mean.
Um, and then while we're there, replace the fans and vents and any other MEP items, um. Up there, while we're at it. Um, so this never got beyond the proposal for design, it, it, the. Um. The, it was bid, the design was bid out, Tarantino's bid was selected, but it was never executed. Um. And I have these costs, I have the costs, the cost of that architectural assessment at the time was about nine thousand dollars, I have a table that I'll get to. Design was about twenty thousand dollars at the time, the quote they got for the roof construction. Design was about twenty thousand dollars at the time. The quote they got for the roof construction was about two hundred and seventy thousand. Um, we don't have to remember that. I'll be getting back to that, just throwing that out there. Okay, so structural options. Um, again, three options. Again, they ended up choosing the second one. Um, option one was to recover the roof uh, with something that was less than two, two and a half pounds per square foot. Um, and I, I'm, again, I'm not entirely sure, but I think that would have been a challenge for Gary to design something that lightweight. Um, option two is what they ended up going with is reinforcing the existing structural elements. Um, and then the third option would be to add supplemental steel framing, um, which I believe means adding columns, additional columns and um, and beams up there, which um, obviously we don't want to be cluttering the garage with more columns.
Hmm.
Um, so it sounds like option two was doable to just reinforce what's already there. Um, and that structural assessment was, that came out of the structural assessment. Again, we have that for you. That was about a five thousand dollar cost. So out of that, again, like I said, there were um, there were construction drawings, there were design plans. Um, and then those were bid out and um, for construction and uh, again, it got designed, but never went to construction. Um, Quono was selected to, to the design. They executed that. The construction was bid, Verdi was selected for that, but it was never, construction never started. Um, the cost for that structural set of designs was about eight thousand dollars. The steel erection, so the structural portion for Verdi would have been about two hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Again, I'm going to summarize this. Sorry, you had a question?
Oh, just, so they were actual proposals.
Yeah.
To do the work.
Yeah. So then in twenty twenty two, the mo, and uh, we brought in Colliers and they, they, they um, it was pretty much, I mean, they had access to a lot of this information, but I, I think in many ways they just kind of were working independently of the prior effort. They put together an RFP for architectural design as if we were starting from scratch. Um, they came up with cost estimates, um, which we kind of think are on the high side. A hundred and seventy-five thousand for all the design work and two point one million for all the construction. Um, and that didn't even include the sprinklers. Um, so to kind of compare the costs, I, I mentioned as I was going through that, so, so I just went through all the twenty seventeen stuff. So we had moving from left to right, twenty seventeen, we had an architectural assessment. About nine thousand dollars. Design was about twenty thousand dollars. The bid, I'm not sure where this number came from, John, but the, the roof construction was uh, two hundred and seventy thousand. Engineering assessment was about five thousand. The engineering design was about eight thousand. Structural construction was about two hundred and thirty thousand. MEP design was included in the architectural design, so that was included. The cost for MEP construction was about thirty thousand. Sprinklers weren't uh, under consideration at that time.
So like, these are all proposed amounts, not actual expenses?
Some of them, some of them were, were, were done, but not all of them. None of the construction ones.
Right, but some of the architectural assessments.
Architectural design and, yeah.
Right.
Uh, but the thing I'll point out about the twenty seventeen numbers and, and even uh, any, and anything in twenty twenty five that we have so far, those are actual proposal costs. The twenty twenty two numbers are engineers' estimates, which are just based on projections.
Okay.
So, excuse me, if you come down to the bottom here, you can see there's a big, big um, jump in terms of what what Colliers had estimated and, and, and now I know that there's, there's been a lapse of time, but still you can see a jump in twenty seventeen. Now, just based on Gary Tarantino's opinion, um, for what it's worth, his construction cost estimate, he, he, he ballparked around a million dollars. So that's still half of the two point one million. So with sprinklers. Uh, that was just a ballpark, I think. Was that with sprinklers?
Before we had the sprinkler despite, but.
Yeah, so.
And he didn't put it in writing. He was like.
Yeah. So anyway, that's where we're at um, with, with costs. Um, I know it's, you know, kind of inconclusive, but I think kind of optimistically, I think we can we can uh, we're, we're probably looking at something less than what the twenty twenty two projections were. I mean, we're very, we were very reluctant to go to board of, so I didn't board of finance with that two point one million dollar estimate. So, um, what do we have? This is where we're at. We have um, we have um, an RFP for design and, and I'll caveat that, that's kind of some components. Um, in a second, I, I, I had to make kind of flow chart just to kind of understand all the pieces here. Hopefully that's helpful to you. Uh, we have some preliminary cost estimates. We have, and then we have those three proposals. Um, what's in this box here, just to point out, the architectural instructor, architect and structural idea, we're not comfortable using those old assessments. They wanted to do new ones. Um, so we did ask, we said, why, why can't we use the old one? As I said, they, they didn't. So on the right here, you can see that's, that's what we've got so far. This is just for those proposals, those three proposals. The, the assessment, this architectural assessment, structural assessment and the fire suppression MEP, which would be designed. Okay, hopefully I'm not confused. All right. So this is my uh, flow chart. So before I get into the next steps, let me just kind of review what we have. Um, so the three kind of columns here are the three aspects of the project, the roof, the structure and sprinklers. So what's kind of unique about this, I guess, uh, uh, another project is a lot of times you can just go straight to design. You don't need any kind of like assessment. Um, but in this case, both the roof and, and the structure, it, it requires like a preliminary inspection and report and the whole assessment to see what needs to get done. Um, basically, we don't have any of these things uh, new. I mean, unless you count in the old ones. Um, we don't have any of these things, but the solid boxes that we have here, we have a proposal for. So those are the costs we have. We have proposal to do an architectural assessment from Gary Tarantino, if that's what we so, that's who we want to go with. Proposal do an engineering with Torello, if that's who we want to go with, and we have a proposal with sprinkler design, which is tied to this MEP. So those four boxes with a solid, uh, solid line, that, that's, we have proposals for. Um, depending on how we want to go, we'd want to get um, architectural design, engineering design, and then so after this second row here, I'm kind of showing then, then we would go to an RFP for construction. And you know, my, my uh, opinion would be try to just lump it all into one thing rather than try to split this up, because as you can see, if you're trying to cut this into separate RFPs, it could get pretty complicated.
I, I think for the construction part, we'd do it all together.
Yes, yes. Um, the other, oh, sorry.
I was thinking just for the architectural design and engineering design sometime, if you, if we're getting assessment, architectural assessment and the engineering assessment. And then we get that and we look at it and we say, oh, all this stuff needs to get done. That's going to drive the design, both the architectural design and engineering design and the cost of that, et cetera. So are there.
Right, that, I mean, that's what the assessment.
One company that would do both or? Are you finding?
I mean, we, well, that's an option.
I mean, sometimes architects have their in-house engineers. Sometimes they hire consultants. A lot of times they hire consultants. So then that's kind of what you're doing there.
Well, yeah, let me, let me, I'll get, I'm gonna, I think I'm gonna answer that in a second. Um, so like I said, we don't have um, any of these, um, let's see, we had uh, the dash line, we don't even have a proposal. So
Right.
The Colliers RFP covered what's in these orange highlighted boxes. So they have a draft RFP that they wrote that would cover all these things. So if we want to go out, if we want to start from scratch and go out for a design RFP from, from the beginning and, and forget about Gary Tarantino and company, then we would just, I'm, I'm just throwing this out. I'm, I'm.
Yeah, I think I said it. If Gary said that two million dollar cost seemed high, then you know.
Well, let me, yeah, let me.
But he also has the background of having looked at it all in twenty seventeen and other times. And so there's
So that's really.
There's kind of money saving to that too. And that somebody new isn't going to come in and have to kind of measure everything and do whatever.
Yeah, cause then you're right, the, the, none of that's changed.
Right.
Yeah. So, so essentially, yeah, you're pretty much, um, we can either use the previous architect and this is in green here, and then go to construction RFP like I'm illustrated here, or we basically start from scratch with this, go out for a new RFP for design, pick a new architect, engineer and sprinkler with designer. And then uh, from there, if that could RFP, but both, both basically end up in the same place with the construction RFP, but these are the two options essentially that you're basically uh, already kind of anticipating when I was going to say. You either use Tarantino, Torello and general drafting design, or you issue a new design RFP.
Cause each one is.
And here's these. Right.
I see why he had one exclude sprinklers.
Just the RFP that Colliers wrote.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Just the RFP that we have written. I mean, and we would definitely, our office would definitely help with writing that RFP here, you know? Uh, we'd say a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. So Colliers versus their other guests.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, if you go back to um, you know, where.
And was, and we don't know. Well, I don't know if you know, was Colliers making some assumptions that some of this information didn't exist that was started from scratch? Not because there's information that's there that can be used, I would assume. I know it has to be updated and everything, but you can't just throw all that stuff out and say, let's start over again.
I don't know if architects are comfortable using their architects.
No, I'm talking about, it's the same guy, right? Isn't it?
Right. So if we, if we go with, with, so Colliers was totally in, independent of Tarantino.
Right, yes.
Um, and in my personal opinion, I, I do think that they were kind of a little bit too high level in their assumptions and, and very.
Collier.
Colliers, yeah. And I think that's why they ended up with such a high cost estimate.
Cause there was some unknowns there.
Yeah, and I think they were just using a lot of.
They just covered themselves with something.
Yeah, that's, that's my impression.
And they, I see like they learned backwards on the design cost too, because it's just a percentage of the construction cost. They didn't.
Right.
See proposals.
Yeah, right. So um.
You put the timeframe, if you start all over again, you're talking.
Yeah, you're talking, in three, four years from now, you're gonna have a slide where you see what happened in twenty twenty five.
Yeah, so yeah, I mean, this, uh, as you can see, if we go with that, we have a faster timeline. Um, they have reasonable fees. I mean, if we, I, I can't say, I don't know if anyone's worked with any of those firms previously. I have not. I don't know. I do, honestly, our office have, I've necessarily worked with them, uh, but I, I don't know, you were maybe the only person here who was around that far back. Um, I don't know what kind of selection process they went through. So there, there is sort of that aspect is that if we were to start a brand new RFP from scratch for design, we would be kind of putting those people through a more rigorous um, you know, vetting rather than just kind of trusting. I'm not saying he's not trustworthy, but just we haven't, we're just kind of inheriting this. Um.
I guess would it be the same options that they, you know? If you go, is there going to be different options? We could select some, some other way of doing it, I guess.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, that's the thing is you got, you know, if you have a whole new design team, you have a fresh set of eyes. Have more than one bid, but it does drop the timeline. Um, I mean, there's, there's definitely pros and cons to it. I mean, we were up until we kind of, until we decided to, to pass the silver to public side building, we were kind of leaning towards just going with Gary Tarantino. He, you know, they had seen it before. They had done, practically done the job before essentially. Um, so you know, in terms of, in terms of speed, eh, you know, and they have reasonable fees, it seems. Um, so I mean, I, I can't really, if, if you want, in my opinion, that's where I would lean. Um, but to say, uh, essentially just to kind of, it's my last slide, just to kind of wrap it up. You know, what we need is very similar to kind of the, the general outline for what we needed for the animal shelter. Except here, we kind of have these three components. We need an architect um, for the roof and the panels. Um, there are, I didn't, I don't think we mentioned, actually, there are some top panels that we would want to replace like right underneath the roof vertical. Um, the engineer for the structural and the sprinkler. Um, and then with all that, put it out for construction and.
So as part of the structural, they'll, they'll take into consideration, because that whole area is similar to the uh, the animal, the animal, you know, dog pouch. That's built on like a landfill part of that. Like, is there any sort of, if you're adding weight to the roof, do they look at like what's there, what it's built on?
Foundation.
Yeah. Yeah, actually look at that and make sure it's uh, it still works, I guess.
Yeah, cause for columns.
Ask a question?
Yeah, go ahead, Dave.
In order to go forward, fir- first of all, do we have any budget provision in the just approved town budget for any of this work?
No.
Okay, so this would be in addition. Okay.
Yep.
And, and the project would require that we do the shaded box on this page and then do the design work and does it, design and engineering work, script the design, and then put these up bids for construction, right? Have I got that order right?
Pretty much, because we would, yeah, yeah, once we, if we do what's in, like you said, the shaded box, then we're going to need.
We go back that, that shaded box is what's in these solid boxes here.
Right. And then we would need to go and fill in the dots, the architectural design, engineering design.
And that's the, that's the, the numbers I just saw on the previous chart, right?
Yeah. On the. Assessments.
Those, those numbers are just for what's in these solid boxes, the assessment.
Okay, I understand that.
And the MEP.
I'd like to make the point that we've previously spoken about not going for uh, town approval or a referendum approval for projects until we have a real design that allows us to get a fixed price or basically a solid price for the construction work.
Right, because, so if we get the assessment, you have both the architectural assessment and the engineering assessment, if that'll get, leave us what we need for design. So then we're going to have to get a proposal for design and a proposal for engineering. And we already have the sprinkler proposal, but that would have to, you know, what their design is. We'd have, have to have them do the design as opposed to give the architect and engineer what they're doing. And is MEP just all sprinkler or is there any electrical or?
The MEP essentially is just whatever MEP is necessary for the roof. So any, any kind of roof perforation and, and it's the fans as well.
Okay.
So I didn't realize. So, sorry, Dave, the um, that twenty-eight thousand, that's only the assessment.
Yes, that's to give us the checklist for the design.
Assessment and, and design for the sprinkler.
Yeah, yeah. So Colliers at one seventy-five.
Might not be far off.
Includes the assessment.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So those numbers get a lot closer.
Yeah, they do, I think.
So we have estimates for the solid boxes that we should proceed with with expense money. And then uh, also, once, once that work is done, do the design work. Um, also at town expense without having a referendum and, and the like, then we develop an RFP. And we get quotes from whoever does the work for the roof and panels, the structural steel and the sprinkler system. And that's when we go for town approval.
Yes, because we have, if we get the design together, I think that's not going to, in the past, a few times we had the referendum amount included the design and the construction.
Yeah, and it, and the referendum, you don't have enough data in order to quote the construction.
Right. So I think that getting the design part, you know, getting assessments on obviously, and then getting the design part done is going to give us a better idea of costs, because that we can include, if we have to put RFPs out, include the cost estimate based on their design.
Yeah.
At, at least their schematics and.
I think you can get to that RFP box. I think you can get down to that without having to get to a referendum, because
Oh, definitely.
The old architectural design was twenty thousand dollars. So even if you double that, it's still less than fifty.
Yeah.
The old engineering side was only eight thousand dollars. Um. The old engineering side was only eight thousand dollars, um.
So if you're engaging with two separate.
And the sprinkler design, we already, we already know what it is. So.
We only need to go to the Board of Selectmen to get to the RFP point.
No, you would also need Board of Finance for funding of the.
Right.
Does the Selectmen go to the Board of Finance? Once they, okay, and they recommend.
Well, the way we always have to do it is we have to go to Board of Selectmen first, then they.
Yeah, yeah. They recommend it.
They send, they recommend to the Board of Finance, and then sometimes some of us have to show up and be there to answer questions to the Board of Finance.
And, and I think the same commentary applies to the earlier project that we looked at, the animal control facility. Right?
So that, the concept of what we need is sort of similar, we just don't have any proposals from anybody.
There any money in the budget for the animal control facility, or is that new also?
Nope, nope. Nope, nope. So then I guess the question is, which one do we do first, or do we try to do them simultaneously? Because you're kind of.
Well, I guess it depends, too, if, because those projects would have to go with referendum, because I'm sure they would exceed the amount, so would the. Board of Finance and Selectmen want to do it on the same referendum or separately?
Well, there's that possibility, or would they not do that? I think we first have to, you know, we, referendums out there, we have to, I think, get for this. Get the assessments done. For animal shelter, we need to think about.
Yeah, location.
Same thing, assessment.
Site assessment, yeah. Site assessment or site feasibility study, some sort of.
Because even if the, the animal shelter, I guess, the assessment will hold, even if that's not done. Before, or at the same time, like that property's not changing, you know what I mean, that's.
Yeah.
Other than the building getting course, but that.
Because we have to look at the, the architectural assessment, the proposals that we have for architectural engineering and then the sprinkler design. If we, we. Say, let's go with the people that have given us proposals already, or if we choose to go find new people. Then we have to go ask for, we have to go begging for money.
It just seems like there's urgency possibly, right?
I think more for the highway.
Yeah, we agree, yeah, we agree.
There's a greater loss to the town. With the, uh.
Yeah, yeah.
By bar.
So probably whatever you can do to get that moving faster.
Hotel bills, if you had to bring animals to Danbury or something, it would be much less than replacing the truck.
I would agree.
So Eric, would they, if you called them up tomorrow, let's just say, would you call them up and say, well, let's, let's go with the assessment. They're kind of older, and so wouldn't they, you know, they may come back, well.
No, they were done.
No, no.
But the proposals.
Yeah, sorry, the proposal, they basically, I'll, um.
Yeah, I'll, I'll go right here.
They could change it, but you're, they were within a ballpark.
Yeah.
Here's the Tarantino proposal. It's from April twenty eighth.
None of us, including.
Yeah.
Eric has the authority to. Sign these, I don't, do you have the authority to sign them and accept them?
If we have money.
But we have to ask for money first.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think on the bottom of all these, it's like fifteen pages.
Yeah, I mean.
So how about we start with, uh, you, you. Check in with both, all three of them, I guess, and ask if the proposal amount still stands, or do they need to give us an updated one? And then from there, we probably have to go to. Board Selectmen, get on their next agenda and. Just jump right into it. Because they might say no.
Hand, and so just say, we need money.
I think for that, though, I mean, Selectmen, I guess you could just run through the same presentation where you're kind of sure the condition of the building and that, if they need to see that, they get that with them.
Have they seen that, have you done that for them yet?
No, this presentation, we just finished it up this morning.
Okay.
This afternoon.
So, does that sound like a, like. Eric checks in with all three, see if the proposals still stand, or they need to update them. If they need to be updated, have them updated. And then do we try to get on the, um, next Board of Selectmen? Meeting, which it's probably next week, because it's usually the first.
They're probably not gonna have.
And third Tuesdays.
Fifteen days on the bottom of that proposal, too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Probably not gonna make it the next meeting.
I know.
You know what I mean? Yeah, yeah. We get thirty days on these instead of fifteen because of the process we have to do with the town, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
See what the, most of the time, they'll give us those proposals.
Do, are these companies, any of these companies also do civil?
These are all pretty small shops, I think.
Yeah, so I think Gary Tarantino is a sub-practitioner, um. Torrello is only structural, in general drafting and design, you could do anything. Okay, I was just wondering if you have a conversation about the. Animal facility.
Animal, we probably want to get some site civil guys besides SLR, maybe a couple.
Give us some proposals for the cost of valuing.
Maybe Ty and Bond, I don't know.
I don't know, CCS, I've used those guys before. Next time. I don't know if they're municipal.
Almost like it's not allowed to survey.
I think that's, yeah, it takes most of it.
So, basically, we need to. Work on a proposal to the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Finance. That allows us to get to the point. Where we issue an RFP for construction. And the result of that RFP, RFP is firm proposals for construction, is that correct?
Um, kind of, because we also have, once we get the assessments done, we don't have to go out and get.
So we want to do it.
Say that again, Dave.
So it's a three-step process, do the assessments. Do the design and engineering work. Go up, go up for bids. Get the results of the bids. And, and go for a referendum or whatever we need.
Our special town meeting, depending on the cost, yeah. And.
And we have them, we, we have proposals for both projects for the architectural assessment and the engineering assessment, is that correct?
Just for the highway garage roof, we don't have anything for the animal shelter.
Is there any insurance savings if you do sprinkle the building, like, is there an offset or something, I'm just.
I don't know, it's a good question.
I don't know what it is to, to cost this, but I would.
We have to ask. Sevy or somebody, Kermo or something.
I'm sure.
We can add. That's, that's another, uh, you know. Cent.
Yeah, that's why to do it.
I would think.
What? I don't, I don't know what that would be, even, you know, it's a steel building, right?
What is the water supply down near the town minimum? Is there enough pressure with the sprinkler system?
We've, yeah, I, we, John talked to Kelly Curtis, who's, uh, the, the field superintendent for the water department. And when he said there.
He said, he said we should be good to go, I think there's a six or eight inch line right, that runs right by the building. And we tap into it through a fire suppression. Doesn't they just do something at Clark Park at one point, too, where they had to put something in there, pump house for that water off in that area? I think that's the line that he, he was referring to, the line used the dead end. At the highway garage, and now it moves back to Clark Park, something he was telling me. Uh, so we have good. Good water for some fire suppression, so. He said, he was not concerned. I think the only, the only thing he did mention was, we do keep the garages open a lot in the winter. Open, close, open, close, and just the temperature in the room. That's, yeah, that's, I mean, maintain certain temperature. Yeah, you might get to use it, dry system is called, still uses water, but I think there's a chemical.
But it's also dry in that it's. That, that sprinklers aren't all full of water all the time.
Right.
They're back there and then it's pressurizing.
Yeah, ready, and then when the.
I see.
Because that's, because dry, there's dry, like, where it's, a chemical that comes out, which you usually use in a computer.
Got it, got it.
Yeah, which we. Yeah.
Um, so does that mean, if you're looking at this slide, we. Agreed that we want to go with the option on the left? Not the ones. I'm not, I'm not, I'm not arguing against it, I'm just, just want to make sure that that's the. I mean, yeah, that's definitely what I do as well.
I, I think if you get them to either confirm or update their proposals, we should be. Just seems like getting new people in, it's gonna cost more because.
Yeah, it's probably gonna cost more, it's definitely gonna take more time. So.
And that, so I.
I'm not in favor of it, I just wanted to make.
Yeah, no, you're clear as far as the present concept.
Anybody have any other? Probably yes, I thought.
I mean, I guess my only question would be, can you ask, um. Sorry, Tarantino?
Yeah.
Um, and the other company, can they provide any type of budgeting for their design?
Um, I mean, usually we ask for.
Prior, like.
Yeah.
Prior to the assessment.
Construction cost estimate as part of this, so.
Yeah. Well, construction cost estimate, but there. But I think what Tom is saying is, as part of the assessment, do they, can they give us some sort of an idea of what's gonna cost to do?
To do the.
The construction documents.
Oh, um.
Some kind, because.
Roughly, we won't hold it.
We're gonna be sort of hot committed. Because no other architect, if we want more proposals, is gonna use their assessments.
Right. So, yes. Well, because we would, and the Board of Selectmen and Board of Finance would probably ask that question. For what's the next step, how much is the next step gonna cost?
So I think we can ballpark it, even if they won't commit to a number. In writing, I think, probably ballpark it. We'll, we'll definitely ask them.
Yeah.
I mean, like I said, we do actually have actual numbers from twenty seventeen. You know.
They've looked at it so many times in the past, they might just give you a number, say like, listen, they might, they might actually have. Go a step further, it's been done so many.
Yeah, I mean, this is an easy job for them.
Well, I'm just kidding, like, we go down this road and then it turns out the three guys combined cost a hundred and eighty. In three months from now, it's at one seventy five, Colliers.
Right, I mean, I.
Was Colliers gonna do the work for that amount, or were they, were they saying?
They were just.
If we put it, if we put it out this bit, we might get proposals that are less, way less than what Colliers suggested, I mean, that was just their. The number they threw out, I mean. Or maybe way higher, probably, I mean.
It's hard to tell, but I mean, I think, I think we have, we trust Tarantino, basically, and, and not to screw us, essentially, is I think. Where we're at with that.
But.
Yeah, you know.
Yes, which I think it's true. Yet, what Tom's saying is that. The next step of what's the design gonna cost, it's gonna come up, probably when we talk to both the Board of Selectmen and.
I know, I know.
You're thinking of projected costs.
Again, sorry, just to, how yours one seventy five was assessment and design.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
But not sprinklers.
Are, are we happy with the work done by the previous architect?
Yeah, what was that?
Say that again, David.
Are we happy with the work done by the previous architect?
We, we only have. We can put those plans in the, in the, um, in the drive if. Guys want to look at them, I don't know.
Well, the, the, the person that does plans will not use their. Phone up in this.
Oh, you're right, no, right, Derek, sorry.
If we picked the previous architect, we'd have to defend this whole source kind of situation, right?
They, he got to the point of, he had given a proposal, but at that point, it stopped. They never pulled the trigger with him actually designing.
But he's done previous work, right?
Yes, he did a previous assessment.
Assessment only, not architectural?
No design.
Gave a proposal, but we didn't go forward with it, the town, whoever, didn't go forward. So we know what the proposal is, it's sitting around somewhere, right?
Mm-hmm.
What year was that from?
Twenty seventeen.
Twenty seventeen.
So you can add four percent, four percent, four percent, four percent. And then look at it and see, oh, okay, there's, and then add, put it in together, we can compare. And I was trying, trying to do.
Colliers is expensive everywhere, aren't they?
Well, they're, they're a very large company, and, you know, I think they do good work and all that, yet I think they're gonna end up being more expensive then.
They're, 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 they're. Way more.
So.
And they also have.
Previous architect has only done assessment, not design, right? Then we need to go out with an RFP for. Design work. For assessment and design.
Whoever shuts off at some time. I think we should try to get another assessment and design.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what it doesn't ask, I mean.
The landlord's gonna have to know.
They're gonna ask, and so Board of Finance.
I mean, unless there are any really crazy surprises, I can't see the design. Changing too much.
Right, I mean, they're gonna put all their excuses in their.
Yeah, of course.
Yeah, I mean, they absolutely refuse to give us a number, we'll take the old numbers and we'll, you know, in eight years, we'll. I mean, yeah. Like I said, even if you double those numbers. The architectural design at that time was twenty thousand, and the engineering design was eight thousand.
Yeah.
So, even if you double them.
Who's gonna prepare the RFP?
Well. It's gonna be a combination of, uh, well, it depends. Often, in the past, we've had it done by the owner's rep that we hire, but we don't have one on board right now, we don't need to take, have one on board. But I'm assuming that we get help from. Finance, who tells us what town stuff, puts, gets put in there and help from architects. The engineer and you guys.
And we'll help as well.
Yeah.
We've done, we've done a few.
Yeah, okay. And you could also attest, say that the architect has to write it. Or you can say that, I mean, we could ask, possibly ask them, have that be. So, the Board of Selectmen will meet, at least according to their regular meeting schedule, July one and July fifteen, and August five and August nineteen. So if we need to get in, and then, um. Board of Finance meets once a month, and so Board of Finance would be. Their second Tuesday, I think, so. Eight or twelve. So we'll have to think, think about that when we're starting to put all this together, so we can go there and do what we have to do and. See how many of us need to go there and. So you're gonna check into, um. Eric and or John.
We're gonna find out if the three proposals are still valid.
Still valid or.
Extension beyond fifteen days, ninety days.
Because you gotta explain that. We're gonna go forward.
Yeah.
To the Board of Selectmen, Board of Finance, and take.
Finance cost.
And yes, yeah.
And if they can give us some kind of an idea of a cost for. Design and construction administration, too, I would sue, because we kind of need them to do that part. Most of them put together, uh. Schematic, design development, construction, that, events, construction administration. Four-part proposal anyways.
Yeah, I mean, that may be something you want to think about when you get, well, I mean, that, that's more a question when you get to construction, if you want to have an owner's rep for that. Or, I mean, the construction administration we're putting there is more for.
That's the architect.
Yeah, for the architect and the structural engineer, it's more kind of a quality control.
Yes.
Sort of a specialized.
Right.
Thing.
And for any construction.
Not necessarily owner's rep, day-to-day kind of activity.
That's a whole separate other form.
Yeah.
Construction administration I'm talking about is the architect, the engineer doing that, so that when, when the contractor comes up with questions. RFIs, whatever, it all goes through.
Yes.
Yes, the owner's rep oversees some of that and keeps in touch with it, because they have regular meetings and do, you know, they'll take care of. Coordination kinds of things. And, I mean, with an owner's rep, you could hire, we could hire a company right now if we wanted to have them. Help us through all of this. But that's more money we spend, yeah, because we've had found. The. Dave, we have found Kathy, who we found in the past, they, you've spent some money on them and they help you save a lot. Because they'll come up with, you know, looking at.
What is?
Or, you know, no, we're not gonna okay that change order, because it's part of the scope of the work that you should have put in your. Bit. So, yes, it can be an extra cost, but it also saves you a lot. And it depends on what you want them to do, the, it can be specific with the school projects, they were instrumental, was STD and they were instrumental. And it depends on what you want them to do, the, it can be specific with the school projects, they were instrumental, it was STV and they were instrumental in getting. All that paperwork and had to go for the state to get our reimbursement. Amounts, which. Were right up there with what was proposed and that worked out really well. All right, all right, what's next? You're, you're gonna check on that stuff and.
Um, to do that.
Are you gonna do anything with this civil site assessment for the dog? Uh, animal service?
Should we get some of the proposals from like SLR and? Like, or do we need to?
We, we, we can certainly recommend some firms.
So, Tom had a name of what, what did you say?
CCS, they used to. I think they do survey. Civil.
Okay.
I just don't know if we're. Picture, if that maybe they have something.
Cause then that's gonna be another amount that will be under. Uh, the fifty thousand, so if we ask for three.
Should we also see if there are any viable locations or just check that site first?
I think we need to, well.
Just getting the polls.
Yeah.
I would say proposals for assessment of up to three sites. If we have one, we could try to find another one.
Maybe you'll finally tell us where your other one is.
We're gonna torture it out. But you said, Eric, you haven't gone looking for town property.
And no, we've done like kinda superficial. Look at the JGS map, where, where can we put this?
Yeah, yeah.
I think there were a few sites in Clark Park, but there's just so much ledge, I don't know.
Right, and then the town, town on property begin with, so the town doesn't have to sell it to the town, but.
That's true.
Yeah, and I think all the non-ledge sites are. Or the less ledge sites are gone and. But once there's lots of blasting and.
Paul Street Sewer Plant doesn't have a lot of property there.
What's that?
Paul Street Sewer Plant, there's not, like, it's not a lot of property there.
I don't know how much.
There is a, it's a weird shaped site, there is some land kind of back there, but I don't know.
Accessing it.
Yeah.
Is that a button back there? There's the brook right there.
Yeah, um. So, I think it's on the. Other side, I don't know who the company is to, to, it's like a contractor.
Day, day on one side, bolt on the other.
Yeah.
Maybe it's. They've been, yeah, they're like storing some stuff in there. Dan's talked to them about moving it out. Dan wanted to put what, the fireman's training center there? Oh, yeah, and, yes.
Yeah, but then we just.
She's saying get in line.
We're gonna have to, we're gonna have to paint it, get rid of my food. The garbage, really, cause of my house, or, or the woods, the couple smiling.
Um. We can reach out to, and, you know, we could reach out and ask. Um. Do you have anything, um, in terms of like scope, do, do you have any, um? Documentation for when you did that for the old PD or the new PD? From that site assessment back then, no?
Well, I probably have. Yeah, I probably have, um. It was part of the needs assessment study. That we hired Jakunski Humes to do.
I mean, a lot of those properties are probably, right, like, point something of something.
Exactly.
Some of the, of the other locations, there's probably not a lot that can fit a building of this size.
Right. Right, like I said, there's a lot of them that are just a little.
Yeah, they, it's.
A little triangle, a little.
Yeah, let's build here and I'll give you town point five, point one five acres of wetlands.
Yeah.
Count towards our open space.
Yeah. At the end of summer.
It's got a nice piece of aggressive. A workbench garage.
Um, so that was.
Had a tattoo shop, I guess.
It started by Parker, right? There was an architect and it was a, um. Morton.
It's gonna be apartments.
Three engineers building.
Somebody killed.
So, well, that was fun, because. The former, former. Did a set. And then I had to take over too.
You know, on that, they're building that.
I entered them. So, yeah. It was done by the town, so. Now, right, right, yeah. I can look and see what I have, the site assessment wasn't a separate thing to the police station, it was. Part of that needs assessment. We went out and scored a certain study, so it was based needs assessment study that was like. You know, recognition of your site surveys. Survey meaning not survey, survey, but looking at a site and determining if it was gonna work or not, and. Jakunski Humes was the one that was chosen by. Needs assessment study of right before I. And that, they did two sites, which was.
Did yours too?
It was the second.
Well, that's the.
So are, are we, are you guys good, are you?
Yeah, good.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So now, are you gonna zoom into the next, come for the next meeting or come in by this or, you know? Something with whatever you've got for updates and keep us, you can send stuff or put it in the shared drive so we can review it.
Yeah, we're twice a month, right, so.
What's that?
The meeting's twice a month, so that's.
Yes. So our next meeting.
So you'll, you'll have to wait for a full month, that's what I'm saying.
It would be July nine, but.
We'll have to be eight years.
July nine would be, uh, the HVAC going first. Cause that, we'll have invoices, like that's the deal, Rick's just gonna give us an update tonight. Now we came back.
Oh.
Yeah.
I can start populating all the documents.
Okay. Okay. Yes.
Yeah, maybe you'll get access to Google Drive.
Thank you very much, we'll move along to our.
Thanks.
And if you have questions, just email, I don't know, some of us.
Sound like. Thanks, guys.
Take care.
I see you, right? You might have to. Hi, all right, so HVAC, Rick, hey, still there, we have.
I am still here, sorry, I did drop up, I mistake for a couple of seconds, but. But, uh, yeah, so I just wanted to give you an update, there are no invoices, obviously, we took care of those, we're trying to take care of those once, uh, once a month at the. Uh, beginning meeting, first meeting of the month, so we'll have a, a number of invoices for next month. But I just wanted to give you an update on what was going on, uh, here, so each day they're making progress, they're, uh, working for a shift now that school's out. Uh, so that's good, they're able to get in, they're currently installing refrigerant piping, condensate piping, ductwork. Um, up on, last time I was there was the sixteenth, and, uh, they had much of the, uh, the third floor ductwork installed and, uh, demoed and installed, so. They're moving along well on that, uh, the abatement is done, I know there was one spot that they didn't miss. That they were going to come back, I don't know if they, that was about a week and a half ago, but I, I. Um, heard that and I haven't heard if they got back yet, but they were going to, uh, be able to come back just for a couple of hours and, uh, take care of what they needed to. So, um, we did have a meeting yesterday, uh, with the, uh, with the team. And things seem to be moving along pretty well, uh, there's no concern regarding lead time issues for any equipment. Um. Jay from Save More is very confident that he's, uh, you know. Gonna be hitting our schedule for the beginning of, uh, end of September for substantial completion, beginning of October for, um, project completion. Um. And in, in looking at the schedule, I did question a couple of things with him that, uh. We were supposed to be having steel, structural steel installed, um. Basically, now through the beginning of July, and it hasn't started yet. But, uh, we did have some, you know, setbacks with the abatement that they were getting a lot of work done inside, uh, because the abatement started. Cause of the, uh, the state approvals a couple of weeks, a couple of months late, um, so, but e- even with that. Um, he doesn't feel that that's gonna inhibit, um, you know, the, the, uh, the end date. Um, so I wanted, uh, connect with him, get an updated schedule and when deliveries were, are gonna be happening. Uh, for structural steel than the deal, uh, DOAS units, uh, to come onto the, uh, come onto the roof. In the interim, um, I had, I said I was out there on the sixteenth with, uh, Coloronan. And they did a, an assessment, just, you know, the beginning of the ductwork was starting to go in, making sure that things were being, um, installed. Per contract and, and, and per, um, manufacturer specs. Uh, there was a report issued, which I'll be posting, I just got those this week, uh, end of last week and, and. Also SES did their own and they submitted that today, so I'll be posting both of those to the, uh, state website. Uh, I'm sorry, town website and, um. Uh, predominantly, uh, everything looks pretty good, there was a little bit of, uh, um. Protection for a couple of the ductwork that SES picked up, which we didn't see when we were there with Coloronan, uh, so it, uh. It's probably more of a one-off, uh, type, type piece, you know, it's a blue protective, uh. Plastic basically that goes over the edges of the ductwork, uh, that some had, had, uh, been removed. Um. And, and just a couple of, uh, one area in, on the third floor where they're using a lot of nineties to try to get around existing, existing piping. And, uh, you know, it wasn't. Had, uh, Coloronan didn't go adverse, uh, in what they did, but, uh, wanted to make sure they minimized any ninety degrees and, um, moving forward. Uh, if they can use forty-fives at all, just to, to, uh, make sure the airflow doesn't get, uh. Uh, constrained. So that's, that's looking pretty good. Um. They are, uh, like I said, moving forward with everything, I, I will have the, the budget, uh, the budget, uh, we don't have any impacts as of yet, there's no, um, additional. Uh, costing, uh, but we still are waiting for three PCOs. Okay, one which I mentioned last meeting, one was for the infill of the abatement that, that's happening. Um, which Mason had to get out there and, and get us a good estimate, so I am expecting that, uh, by next week. Uh, the other one is a, um. We had a workaround to get over some, some beams and, uh, like we mentioned at the last meeting. That some piping had to come down, or some ductwork had to come down into the, the two classrooms, I think it's three nineteen and three twentieth, if I'm not mistaken. And, um, they just, uh, you know, getting, running the pipe through there is, is one thing, but then they have to build a small sopet. So I'm, I'm looking for the best way to do that, whether it be an acoustical ceiling, sopet, or whether it be a hard ceiling sopet. Um. To see what the pricing is on that, so we can make a, a, an assessment on how to carry that through. And the last one is actually a, a PCO for, um, a possible credit, uh, to get rid of the, um. Um, to do away with the, uh, the platform stairs and rails that go around the DOAS units, uh, because of the, uh, change in the discard, so. Um, I'm hoping that the, uh, the sopet work can kind of fall within, within the allowance. And, um, you know, may, maybe what we have is, uh. Um, with the masonry work and the, uh, the credit, maybe a wash, no, or, 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 or a credit to the project, so I'm keeping my fingers crossed on that one. Um. That's really it, uh, as far as the budget goes, we're still looking at, um, the same as last time, we reviewed the budget, a hundred and two thousand nine fifty-nine is left in the contingency. Um, for that. Uh, that hasn't changed, I have posted, uh, the latest invoices to the, uh, town website. And, uh, that should, everything should be up to date there. Any questions?
What did you say was left in contingency?
Uh, one oh two nine fifty-nine.
Right, that's, yeah.
That's the same as last time, right?
Right, yep.
Yep.
So, um. You're still waiting on that abatement allowance, whether that's gonna stay, stay within the allowance amount and not go over? And require a change order?
Well, the abatement, the abatement, uh, that does, I, I did get a, um, and I did post it to the, to the website, uh, it was twelve thousand nine hundred and change, I believe.
Yeah.
Um, for that and that, so that does fall within the, within the allowance of fifteen thousand dollars, what I'm hoping for is the, the sopet. Uh, that, you know, still might, might be less than two thousand dollars, that, that can fall within the allowance.
And hopefully credits on the DOAS units.
Correct. Yeah, and with the DOAS units, you know, I, I don't know what the, what the credit's gonna be, but, you know, we can make an assessment if we, if we do want it, what, you know, is it needed? Hmm, probably not from my understanding, but, uh, you know, if, depending on what the credit is, is it a benefit to the project or not, or is it better to take credit?
Correct. So, has Save More been better about getting to meetings and all like that?
Yeah, they haven't missed the meeting, um, we, we moved the meeting date to eleven thirty to allow them time to get out of their, their initial meeting. Um, so that has worked out well, uh, they did submit, um, and I, I reiterated again, uh, a two-week look ahead. And I did, uh, in our meeting yesterday, they have been working closely with, um. Um. Dave, you know, the custodian, uh, as far as keeping him informed on what's happening, but, you know, we still need to know. It was their understanding or their thought, um, when I say their, Save More's thought, that they were doing a two-week look at every two weeks. When I was, wanted them to, it was a two-week look ahead and update it every week. Because, you know, it, it changes, it changes as you go, so they, they do have communication daily, um, so, which is good, but, uh, I just wanna formalize it every week.
So. At the next meeting, we'll have all the, hopefully all the four invoices that we are looking for, STV. CES, Save More and Coloronan.
Correct.
Care of those, we'll rearrange the agenda. Eric's gonna have to wait a little bit, but, um. He's gonna be.
Yeah, I, I have received a, a draft copy of, uh, application number six from Save More.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't know if Eric will be ready by next meeting anyways.
He might have something.
Yeah, yeah, something, yeah.
Yeah. That's a lot to try to get together, cause it'll be July eighth, I think, is our next meeting, ninth, July ninth. So, the other thing that we have to look at and think about, which you were on the email, Mark Dupre sent. An email to me and Rick. Um. Later yesterday afternoon. Cause we've been, I've been asking Rick and Rick's probably checked in with Mark about, um. When we've looked at the STV invoices, we're, you know, we're more than halfway through your contract amount. And so Mark said he was planning to attend tonight, but then they were invited to go interview for another project. Tonight. On the other side of the state, on the other side of the state. And he can't even get out and call. So he basically, basically is saying that current projections. Because of the change to the end of substantial completion by the end of September. Possibility of running over by about three thousand. Isn't too bad. Um. He's been working with Rick to, uh, minimize all of that. But they're gonna have to. Kinda keep an eye on it as we go through the summer. They'll know better, like end of July, early August, and. But, and I, I kinda was almost expecting something, because during the contract negotiation with Save More and. Um. It was mostly with Save More, but I think possibly with SES too. Between the town attorney and Save More, took a lot longer and it took a lot more of STV's time than they thought, and it was mostly with Gerald and, but some Rick and Mark. Took a lot more time than. Was projected, because the original RFP. Um. Included a substantial completion by mid-August, so now we're pushing the end of September. So anyways, they're gonna keep track, you're gonna keep letting us know how we're going with that. And looking at a possibility of another six weeks substantial completion due. You know, I think mid-October is what they were talking about, getting everything finished by, so. There's that. Nothing specific yet, but possibility.
Yeah, I think we just don't want to, you know, provide a change order now that we don't know what's needed. You know, I'll try to minimize my hours, but but still, you know, servicing the town naturally and making sure we get done what needs to get done. But you know, moving forward, I think, you know, if it goes on another six weeks, it'll it'll just be, you know, whatever, whatever, whatever the timeframe is. That that needs to happen.
Yeah, early on when we were going through the contract part of it, I was surprised at how much surprised in a way, but that's how much time Geraldine had to put in and back and forth with Melanie, town attorney. So and I know she'll have to put in, will there be paperwork that has to go to the state for reimbursement with the grant or is it an outright grant?
I have to check with Geraldine on that, to be honest with you.
I'm sure that's figured in, so. Okay.
Can I ask, just to confirm, you think you'll have masonry estimate and the credit for the catwalk for next meeting?
I, yes, I'm I'm pushing for it. I was pushing for it for this meeting, but it didn't happen. So I told them I definitely need it for the next meeting. Because then, you know, every two weeks, if they don't get it now, then, you know, are they gonna be fabricating the the platform in the meantime? We have to pay for it. That I don't want. I made it very clear. We need to make sure we get on this.
Yeah, because we don't want to have them moving ahead with something that's not needed.
Right.
And that masonry work that fits nicely somewhere into the schedule, it's not pushing anything else?
Correct, correct. Yeah, it was, it was, it was, the rush was getting the abatement done. So because of the availability, the bitten contractor.
Gotcha.
Okay, should anybody have anything else for Rick? Good, thanks so much. We'll see you in a couple. Yeah, thanks for hanging around.
Bye-bye.
Yep, good night. All right, so then municipal center locker room renovation. So I emailed Jay from BMP asking, and I think I included Dan and Rachel in that one, asking for the breakdown of what that cost was and a little more information on that building assessment that they had talked about as part of the architectural plans. Didn't get a reply. I also emailed Dan and Rachel separately saying, do we need to get, I mean, Colliers is still sort of contracted with the town. We could use them without having to go do a whole big as far as giving us some kind of idea of what are the next, you know, what's the next step? I really don't want to go out and hire an architect who's gonna do this building assessment if we really don't need the building, that much of a building assessment. I want to know what you would say, you know, maybe it's something we can use in the future. Oh, that'd be great. But what is it, what is it gonna cover? What are we getting out of it? So I don't have any more than that, but it brings me back to, like you had asked at the last meeting, so I said I would email that and et cetera, that, you know, who does all that usually. Well, it's not always me or me that does the chair. I've been doing a lot of it lately with lots of new people because I know all the players and I can easily do emails, et cetera. But as we get more into doing, we gotta get this HVAC thing done on time. As we get into working on both the animal shelter and the highway, we don't know if both of them are gonna be happening simultaneously. It's gonna depend on money mostly. But it seems to make sense to come up with plans for both of them and have, you know, know where we're gonna put the animal shelter, what's the cost gonna be, et cetera. Plans for the high-rise garage, what's it gonna cost? Because maybe we will do both at the same time. Depends on how much money is needed for other things. But I think it would make sense to have I can't always go through the chair or or just always always go through me. I've always, so I've not always been chair. John Menti was chair for a while. There were different people who were chair back and forth, depending on what's going on in people's lives, et cetera. But I would always make sure that there was something that was needing to be done and I was the chair, but I was taking care of getting some things done. The chair was always included in emails, et cetera, so that the chair could run the meeting and be knowledgeable about all stuff that has to go on. So we could, and we have done this in the past, where there's a couple of projects going on and someone's the lead on this project and someone else is the lead on that project. So they are paying a little more attention and they're the ones that maybe get information emailed or questions asked, or can we talk about this in a meeting, make sure you have paperwork, et cetera. But again, always including the chair so the chair knows how to put an agenda together, et cetera. Does that make sense?
Yeah. So your point, as these projects kind of kick off, if there's gonna be, like you said, all of these projects that wants kind of like, oh, like a subgroup that kind of manages
Yeah. I know, as long as it's not, you know, it could be two people. We don't need, we just want to make sure we don't have a quorum if you're getting together to talk about
Yeah, and I was just thinking, I wanted to be
Because we have to also make sure that that we can email information out, but we can't discuss through email specific things about projects because it has to happen on a meeting.
Yeah.
Has to be here.
Emails are just stating facts, right?
Yeah, basically putting information out there and you can ask questions. So you can say, oh, can we get more about this or but it's, and sometimes it's a fine line. Because we kind of got slapped a few times when discussions started happening.
Now, during our tour a few weeks ago, they also spoke about the middle school.
Yeah.
So that may not happen till next year or something.
Oh, even further down.
Oh, okay, the roof and all that kind of stuff.
Right, yeah, that's because we're looking at it now, like you you said, you know, we start looking at putting architectural, you know, structural drawings together and then you get an RFP and we have either a town meeting, if it's under a million, a town meeting, or over a million, a referendum. And then we start doing construction. That's gonna be
Because you also mentioned the fire department, right?
Yeah, so
South Street and then you said
When I made a list of places I thought we should walk around to, unfortunately, that list went out to a whole bunch of people that I I think, you know, was sent out as a possibility and that by me. And so I got the fire of South Street.
Yeah, you probably got every building in town.
They were like, oh, when are you coming here? So I I talked to them. They are gonna, I said, if you could, I'll find the old lists I have because that was kind of how we started with finally getting the grant, putting that elevator in. But they have long lists of things that needed to be updated, upgraded, et cetera. And put that back together, go to the board of selectmen or go to the fire fire commission and tell them to go to the board of selectmen and say, here is what we need. Because I ran into Alistair, is he the chief now?
Yeah, he's the chief.
Yeah, he's here and maybe I was here working on the referendum or whatever. So I kind of gave him a quick update, said, you know, make some noise. I think that could possibly happen in the future, but I don't think right away. It could be a few, three years down the road. As far as getting the information together, getting what do we need, how are we gonna come up with funding, et cetera. I like the idea of having some plans together so that grants come along, we can grab something. Although we always need to make sure that the plans aren't gonna sit around like this, these twenty seventeen things. They don't want to use that information because it's cool. I think some of it they can use. You can't let it stuff sit around where you gotta then pay somebody to update them.
Kicking a can down.
Yeah, that's why you can't, like, you don't want plans for ten different projects and it sounds like a fun of a like, it's just kind of waste.
Right. And I think that that both board of selectmen, board of finance are looking at, you know, what's gonna go first and how much money can we spend on certain things and they'll be reasonable about it. You know, one one or the other, I think highway garage might have more of a preference and need than the animal shelter right now.
Yeah, it seems, I was thinking that, yeah.
So and then, so then, giving that discussion about election of officers, do we want to do that? Do we want to someone ready to, because the process would be someone nominates somebody, somebody seconded it, we discuss it a little bit. And then we vote. So, I mean, if somebody if somebody said, you know, they nominate
Tom.
Dave, and Dave's like, I can't do that. I just started a new job or something, whatever. But if we're still, we're six of us here, we can, if we want to wait till all seven of us are here, we can do that too. Thoughts? Questions, problems, difficulties?
I saw from the last minutes, of course, it says I wasn't here, I was out of town.
Yeah.
Jeff, is he in?
No, I may remember.
Oh, no, no. Oh, I'm sorry.
No apologies.
Sorry.
So we have David, 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 we have David, David, David. David, 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 and then we had John, John, David, David.
There's still a couple of, there's still a couple of receipts though.
So Dave Olson needs to be replaced and once we get somebody, then I need to be replaced. And they're still putting
Can't be replaced. There's no replacement for me.
But I I but I also wanted to, you know, get I don't have to wait to be replaced to you, for you to elect the chair. So if you want to elect the chair, you can elect the chair.
So like if you said Dave or you said Tom or Roger?
Well, sure, if somebody, anybody here could nominate somebody and then second it, I would still come to meetings and be not the chair. But I could
Yeah, and you'd kind of want, yeah. I'm in a situation, I don't, just with life right now, it'd be difficult for me to kind of take that over, but
Because the thing that
Happy to help out wherever I can as far as committees to maybe kind of
The thing that we all have to realize is that as chair, you run the meeting, but you shouldn't have to be. You should not expect be expected to be running around during the day checking on jobs, et cetera. That's why we have an owners rep or somebody else who does that kind of stuff. I was able to at times when I was chair like go after work or meet somebody because I didn't, I had different jobs I did. So sometimes I could you know, stop here during the day if I had to pick up stuff, meet up with Kathy to get, we used to have a lot of stuff that printed, got printed and handed out at me. We don't do that as much anymore. Which is good, but sometimes I'd have to kind of run over here and get in the building before it closed to make copies of things to hand out at meetings. Now we don't have to do so much of that, which is good. However, really, really, whoever ends up being chair needs to be firm about, I can't do all this stuff during the day. Can't be expected to. Bunch of volunteers, we do as much as we can during a meeting or that's why I was, had asked Eric about, did he want us to read stuff ahead of time and I want, we try to get stuff sent out by Friday, so you have the weekend to look at stuff. That's why we try to send out invoices and everything. Especially proposals, things that we really need to read. If we're gonna make a decision on it, you can't look at it that night and, you know, that night and then make a decision on it. So we try to get that done ahead of time too. So I know it's like, I understand what you're saying. I was chair when we started the police station. But I was also taking care of my parents then and I said, I can't. And so John Menti agreed. We elected him chair. I was vice chair, so I did fill in for him a few times as vice chair and fill in for the chair or anybody can fill in for the chair to run a meeting. You you appoint the person and you kind of have to do it all Robert's rules and everything. But you can elect a temporary chair if both the chair and the vice chair are away or on vacation or unavailable and you still have a quorum, you can do that. Lots of ways around. I was at a planning and zoning meeting last night and they had elected a temporary chair until the chair showed up.
So is that the only position that needs to be filled?
So according, yes, according to the charter, it says chair and secretary. But I think that's way back from before the town put together the recording, secretaries put them through some training and paying them, et cetera. We could elect that, we usually do elect secretary, but they don't do anything. So we would elect a chair and a vice chair, I think, are the important things, which I then have to tell the town clerk about. That's another thing I end up doing a lot of is making sure all documents and things that need to go to places like any any contract that gets signed by Dan has to then get filed with the town clerk. So somebody has to make sure that that paper copy goes to the town clerk.
So there's still those paper copies.
That they keep it on, I think it gets scanned, but I think they keep the paper copy as a
So when Dan signs something, he doesn't just say, hey, can you bring this to the town clerk?
So what I would do, well, and that, I think that happened more recently with Save More and some of the HVAC things because I was, because STV was doing a lot of it way back, but then we had COVID and we, nobody went anywhere and everything had to be electronic. But uploading them, so I would take it, upload it to the shared drive and then give it to the town clerk. I think more recently, I think Melanie had Dan sign it. Somehow it got to the town clerk, but there was also an electronic copy of it to be uploaded. Just kind of want to make sure all the basics are covered.
Is that the shared drive we just got access to?
No, it's the old one that has Yeah, the Board of Ed one, which some of the stuff may not have made it there because if I didn't do it, I need to check into that too. So this is actually not a bad time as far as meetings go, when we have lots of things on our agenda. We've met until, what, oops, our record is eight, eleven o'clock. We don't want to do that. We don't want to do that, which is, which is why we need to have, then we need to think about this too. With the school projects, having an owners rep on board and having their OAC meetings every week they were having them helped to make it so we weren't meeting until midnight. There were times when we were solving problems that should have been solved with those meetings. Our, not because of us and not because of STV, but a lot of people. So we want to make sure that when we come to meetings, we have all the information we need to make decisions and then we're done. We shouldn't have to be doing that day-to-day stuff for projects. They should be done by the people we hired to do that, so. So we good for now or are we, are we gonna?
Are we nominating somebody? Is that what you're getting to?
Are we gonna, if you want to nominate somebody?
We're waiting till next meeting.
Next meeting.
Motion to adjourn.
You have to do a motion table till the next meeting.
Oh, well, it doesn't say what we're doing, right? It just said, election of officers, it didn't say.
Do we have to elect, we have to, because we haven't tabled it before.
You can table. I mean, I would just do an emotion to table. It's been a couple of times.
Okay, so I make a motion that we table election of officers to the next meeting.
Second.
Second, all in favor? I oppose, done.
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor? I oppose, done.
Good night, everyone.
Very good. Thank you, David Olson. Hey, how about next time we nominate, we report that? Well, you said it, it's not here. I know. Are you still recording?